City Clerk, are we ready to go?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Obviously, I appreciate everybody being here and hopefully staying dry. So why don't we go ahead and call the San Bruno City Council meeting of January 26, 2021, to order, please? And if I could, please ask our city clerk to take a role.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here, sorry.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. And if I could ask all of us to rise and together, let me go ahead and do the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For all.
Thank you all. All right, let's move on to item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up for three minutes. It is the council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not intended pursuant to state law. And if we can, city clerk, if you could start to call in our speakers.
Yes, first of all, Stephen Seymour.
Hello, this is actually Sandra Perez-Vargas. Good evening.
Hi, Sandra.
I just wanted to let everybody know, I'm sure some of you have heard, this weekend, a group of residents held a cleanup, a cleanup day. We covered the Tanfor and neighborhood. And we were expecting like maybe 20, 30 people. And we had like 80 volunteers come out and some were on the council. And it was just so wonderful to see our community coming together to address an issue that it's just been really affecting a lot of our quality of life that we have in San Bruno. It's, I think people are just really wanting to find a really organic solution on how to solve the illegal dumping, the littering, there's a lot of issues. And, and one way to address it is to acknowledge there's an issue and to see what we can do about trying to get the litter not to hit the ground to begin with residential, we can deal with, with our receptacles. I mean, how do we get the litter not to fall on them? Aftermarket straps, Recology, Kirsten at Recology has reached out. She's helped us on different events. This being one of them, the cleanup, we need merchants to do their part to make sure that if the areas in front of their stores are dirty, that they help clean this up. I mean, we need accountability and we need code enforcement in there. We would love to have the schools participate, like maybe running a Don't Be a Litterbug program like we had when we were kids that were so effective. And I wanted, because it is a wellness issue, especially, you know, with COVID, a lot of people are going through a lot of depression and we're trying to look at the good side of life. And when we go outside and we see, you know, sofas on the sidewalk and all this, it just, it really adds to like the mental abuse a lot of us are going through right now. So I just really wanted to give a shout out to everybody who participated in that. And also to let people know that this was a group that started very recently. It's called Cleaning San Bruno Now. It's a Facebook group, part of the San Bruno Now and the San Bruno Now discussion groups. So I invite any of you out there who are interested and to please joining us, you know, we're all collaborating, just, there's so many different issues, so many ideas. And the more ideas we have, the better. So I just, that's what I wanted to share and really hold CalTrains, Bard, and all those agencies accountable. They should not be allowed to come through our cities and just turn away while their properties are just falling apart. I mean, COVID is the least of our problems in some of these locations. We found so many needles, so we have hepatitis, all these, you know, gross things we can get. And last but not least, now that the voters have voted, that, you know, cannabis is something we should be considering of selling here in San Bruno. I think we really need to aggressively remove that ban and move forward, find where acceptable areas are in our community, to put up dispensaries. And let's get ahead of this, guys. I mean, you know, Burlingame, everyone else around us is gonna come and run with that torch and we have the advantage of being right by the airport. So I don't know, I can't see the time on here, but that's it. Thank you to everybody who's helping be part of the solution. And my husband Sevar wants to speak also. Thank you.
So it is three minutes, it did go a little over. And now we have our next speaker and if we, we'll just stick here since the phone's ready to go and then we'll go back to the list.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, yeah, look, Sandra said a lot, so mine will be short. I just wanted to thank the whole community for being out there. This really is a community issue and we have to address it collectively. And this past weekend showed that we can do that. It's a, it's a very big first step. But I would like to thank the council members who were there. I'd like to thank our mayor who was there. And Sandra already mentioned Kirsten Pinocchi from Recology. Parks and Recs, Dan and Ann were just wonderful to work with. We really appreciated having the pickers out there and, and all the equipment that was brought out by the city. So I, I'm very optimistic that we can make a dent in this if we work together. And I'm really interested in what council member Medina will be speaking about at the end of the meeting tonight. It seems like a very, a great first step. And that said, I'll give my time back to whoever else might be out there to speak. But thank you very much to everyone, including the city.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Wayne Lee. Just one moment, Wayne, while I bring you in. Hi, Wayne, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear. Thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
My name is Wayne Lee, I'm former council member from City Millbrae and president of the Asian Pacific and Island Caucus is, and also your former representative on the Associate Bay Area Government. First of all, I want to thank, I like to congratulate Mayor Rico Medina and Mike Salazar for your reelection and welcome, Councilmember Hamilton. First of all, I just want to thank you for the, working together and as, as a council member, it was a great pleasure. And I just wanted to tell you how much I really appreciate your camaraderie, your support and your friendship. And also I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve you on the Associate Bay Area Governments. So, and in my capacity as the president of the caucus, I'd like to also extend my hand to you. If you have any issues that we can work on together, we'd be happy to. Thank you very much.
And, and just a point of personal privilege, former council member and former mayor Wayne Lee, want to thank you for your service to the county and always being there and available when we started the campaign against hate and everything else that you've done over the years. And I know that you'll still be around and involved and so thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next we have Jeffrey Tong. Jeffrey, just one moment, I'm trying to get you unmuted. Hi, Jeffrey, can you hear us?
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Tong from Fleetwood Drive. I co-founded Colinas Costeras, a community wildlife habitat in 2018. And College Road is part of the Bay Area Ridge Trail between Skyline College and La Vila Ridge, yet College Road appears neglected. I'm here today to petition the city of San Bruno to adopt College Road for Habitat Restoration and place a banner on College Road at Sharp Park Road to declare it as an ongoing management site. It's not a neglected site. In addition, San Bruno is the only city in San Mateo County that has no climate action plan, yet global warming is already here and has been here for years. Don't just form a beautification committee, San Bruno needs an environmental sustainability commission with full authority of the planning commission. So please agendize these two matters for discussion and vote at the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Next we have Bo Smith. Just one moment while I bring you in. Just one moment, I'm receiving an error when I try to bring you in, Mr. Smith. Trying to get you unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, there you are.
Wonderful.
Whenever you're ready.
Great. So I just wanted to thank everybody for the cleanup. Mayor Medina, thank you so much for showing up and, and the rest of the city council members that were there, I know Linda was there. I kind of had my head down picking up garbage, so I didn't get to meet everybody. I know Tom was there because we loaded the couch together. And that was a great first impression, Tom, it's the first time I got to meet you and, and it was a pleasure working with you. I wanted to thank the city for, you know, providing the pickers for us. They provided pickers, they gave us the best, the best to use and I think we got most of them back actually too. So that was a big plus. I wanted to thank Kristen Prinochi of Recology for, you know, providing the containers for us. I'd never met Kristen before, Kristen before either and Stephen really worked with her to get the containers. After I met Kristen, I said, I think we're gonna need some more containers for the future ones. She said, yeah, we both agreed on that. But, yeah, you know, I just really hope that this is the beginning of a good relationship between the community and the city. And I think everyone was really enthused about it. I mean, the mayor coming out, Mayor Medina, you coming out and showing your support, you know, was a real, real plus. I'm looking forward to the leadership, I'm, I'm looking forward to the items on the agenda tonight and I hope they go well. And, yeah, I'm sure I'm forgetting something or somebody, but I just really want to express gratitude for everyone coming out and showing support. I wrote down a few notes here to make sure I didn't miss anybody. I hope, I did want to put a mention out for the, you know, the, the app, the San Bruno Responds app. I hope the city does take some action on promoting that app. I mean, it's something that can really work. I would really like them to see, you know, when we take a picture of whatever our complaint is, whatever the problem is that we're trying to get solved, whether it be garbage or graffiti or whatever, illegal dumping, we give a before picture, but I think if we could get an after picture too, because I'm getting reports back from people that were saying it's cleared, but it's actually not cleared. And it's all hearsay, I don't really have any proof of that, but I've just heard that from other people. So I think that would be a great addition to the app that would, you know, wipe out any question whether the city was responding to things or not. But, yeah, I think that's all I have to say right now, just really grateful for the turnout and really grateful for the leadership and support. And I hope it's starting a trend for us to all come together and really get behind this issue. Thank you very much.
For your comments, next, please.
Uh, next we have Alex Melendez, just one moment. Hi, Alex, I'm trying to get you unmuted.
Can you guys hear me now?
There you are, yeah.
Oh, okay. Hello, San Bruno City Council and city staff. My name's Alex Melendez, San Bruno resident. I'm trying to decide which of the many things I want to talk about tonight, but for this particular item, for this particular public comment period, I want to give a plug to the Mid Peninsula Boys and Girls Club's Youth of the Year Award. If you guys don't know, the Boys and Girls Club on the peninsula, they are kind of the apex group when it comes to, you know, participating, leading and providing leadership skills to young people. And they're going to have their Youth of the Year Award tomorrow at 7:00 PM. I was lucky enough to be considered one of the judges, it was a really, it's a really, it's, it's, it's an honor, but it's a tough decision when you listen to these just talented, talented kids. So I want to give a plug for that, it's gonna be again tomorrow at 7:00 PM. You can find out more at the website for the Mid Peninsula Boys and Girls Club website. And the other thing I wanted to comment about was just ongoing state legislation. Last time I was here, I commented on two pieces of state legislation regarding AB 16 and AB 17. I, I just hope that the council will continue to keep an eye on and look for potential avenues to support legislation when it comes to some sort of relief for renters and homeowners. I think one of the current bills that's up for discussion now is something called Senate Bill 91. I don't have a position on it myself, but it seems to be that the deal with the governor seemed to strike up. And the more opportunities that we have to kind of display our values as a city in supporting these pieces of relief and legislation, I think would go a long way. That's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Don't see any other hands raised, if anybody else would like to, they can. Oh, actually, I spoke too soon. Jeremy Sardnecki, just one moment.
Hello, can you all hear me? I hope so. I'm just gonna first begin by saying congratulations, Sandra, 80-plus people, what a head count, you do great work for the city. But I would just like really to go over how important it is, I think, that this city really create an environmental and sustainability committee for a multitude of reasons. First off, we have a public, a public safety committee that's making videos on looking both ways before you cross the street, very important. I would like to have educational programs that show people how to reduce electricity and water consumption, among other things. But what I think would make this a huge asset and a valuable asset to the city of San Bruno is that we really need to have a vocal and unrelenting voice that is going to push Peninsula Clean Energy to have this city transition to 100% renewable energy as soon as possible. Like my friend Jeffrey Tong stated, climate change is real, climate change is here and it's happening right now. So what we need is Peninsula Clean Energy to not source its energy from hydroelectric, hydroelectric dams in the northern part of the state. We need to call on our very successful companies like YouTube, Google, to upgrade their infrastructure. Because what we have is more than enough resources and it's only inevitable if we are going to avoid environmental catastrophic damage that we transition to 100% renewable energy. So let's make that change as soon as possible.
For your comments, next, please.
Uh, next we have Terry Chavez.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to thank everybody for the cleanup day too. I mean, what a fantastic turnout it was, every, the areas that were clean, you know, I'm hoping that they stay clean, it's, you guys did a fabulous job, so I want to say thank you to every person who volunteered and worked. I also want to thank the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, the San Bruno Education Foundation. As you know, many students are in need of basic school supplies. And the San Bruno Lions, in partnership with the San Bruno Rotary, the San Bruno Education Foundation, and also generous, generous grant from the California Lions Foundation, $10,000 in school supplies were packed and distributed to 414 students in the San Bruno Park School District. So I wanted to say thank you for all of our wonderful local organizations that we have that work really hard to support our students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next, please.
Next we have Chandra Jayanti. One moment, Chandra, while I bring you over. Hey, Chandra, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, all. I am Chandra Jayanti and I have been a resident in the Crestmore neighborhood since 2000, except for a brief period between 2002 and 2006. My reason for being here today is to request that the council and the governing body of the city of San Bruno to prioritize sustainability and adopt citywide action plan and send the message that we can act now, if not yesterday, to the broader community. Have you heard the story of our times insect apocalypse? Insect populations are in huge decline in North America and Europe due to the several factors, including habitat loss and use of insecticides. I would like you to, I'd like to urge you to find out why, if you have, if you have not already done the exercise. It is part of the circle of life and we are breaking the circle into fragments. I would also ask each and every one here to ponder this, with such wealth of information at our fingertips or at the touch of a button, are we creating poverty in action by tuning out completely to maintain our own sanity and survival? I am guilty at times and do that myself when overwhelmed. Please agendize in future meetings or wherever it is, action can take place and form a community committee so there is direction and plan to influence and engage the community, address carbon neutrality from municipal operations, review and report, minimum standards for private construction, investing in education of staff, identifying knowledge gaps, risk assessment, revisit action plan for vegetation management, public land and direction to private land management, harmful chemicals and noxious weeds. Is Rio Skyline Boulevard, Skyline Boulevard is full of eucalyptus trees? And community needs some kind of direction and it has to come from somewhere. There is confusing information out there and somebody should take a stand. And I can't think of any better authority to take the first step than the city council and the governing body. Thank you for this opportunity and thank you for listening.
For your comments. City Clerk, correct me, but I'm not seeing any more hands up at this time?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to announcements and presentations. And the first item is item A, receive update on COVID-19 response efforts. And we're going to turn it over to Jennifer Gamos.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening. To the mayor and city council, my name is Jennifer Gamos and I am here presenting to you this evening on behalf of our EOC Public Information Team. We have the presentation up here on the screen, so you should be able to see the cover page now. I have a full but brief agenda this evening. I will quickly go over our current status on the blueprint for a safer economy. I'll go over county statistics, safety and COVID-19 prevention. We'll provide you with information on city services that are all available, even though our offices are limited, as we have adapted with safety protocols. And of course, we will be available for any questions that you may have at the end of the presentation. And I'll start this evening with the blueprint for a safer economy. Yesterday, Governor Newsom and state health officials lifted the stay-home order for the Bay Area region. The order was lifted due to the increased four-week ICU capacity projections. And while the order was lifted, San Mateo County remains in the purple or the white sprint here on the blueprint for a safer economy. On the screen, you'll see the allowances for indoor operations, retailers, shopping centers and malls, they can all operate indoors at 25% capacity. Hair salons, barber shops, personal care services, nail salons can operate indoors with modifications. And restaurants, places of worship, movie theaters, gyms and fitness centers can all operate outdoors. San Mateo County remains at a high-risk level and the county metrics on display clearly show that our risk level remains in that purple tier. And so it will take our, our collective effort to reduce that. Locally in San Mateo County, there are 34,510 positive cases and a total of 356 deaths. This data is from the county health website and you can see we are at an all-time high since the beginning of COVID. However, on the cases by episode date graph here in the middle, there appears to have been a slight dip. This doesn't mean to let your guard down, but it does show that our efforts are making a difference. In San Bruno, we have a total of 1,876 cases and that is as of last Friday, January 21st. And there is a new metric dashboard that's available on the county health website and it's related to COVID-19 vaccinations of San Mateo County residents. This is a hot topic and of high interest to many in our community. Currently, there are just under 49,000 individuals in our county that have been vaccinated and that equates to about 6.3% of our population, in the county that is. And on the right-hand side of the dashboard, you will see the breakdown, or I should say, who administers the vaccine. So there are several different methods of getting that. That brings me to the next slide, which shows information about the complexity and carefully crafted guideline for distributing the vaccine in an equitable and safe manner. The county is entering into the Phase 1B of distribution plan and information about sources and eligibility and other links to providers are all available on the San Mateo County Health Department website, that's snchealth.org. This includes information from Blue Shield, Kaiser, San Mateo Medical Center, Stanford Health, Sutter, PAMF, and for those that are uninsured, and also for veterans. The distribution formula takes many factors into consideration, so it's not an easy and simply point to one side or another. However, it is recommended that residents work directly with their primary care physicians. The state has also launched a notification system that will alert residents that sign up for it once they're eligible within their respective category. And you can sign up for that at myturn.ca.gov. The state has a beta program that's now in operation for Southern California for appointments and so hopefully that will be expanded soon as well. Next, we will talk about safety. Now that outdoor dining has reopened, it is important to practice outdoor tent safety. This applies to restaurants and at home for those who have tents in their backyards. Tents have the potential of being highly flammable, so no smoking or open flame should be under or near a tent. A portable fire extinguisher should be close by and exits should not be blocked. If any restaurant or resident has questions about fire safety, please contact the San Bruno Fire Marshal. That number is listed on the screen, it's 650-616-7093, or by email at gschlice@sanbruno.ca.gov. And how can you resist this cute bear face? Bear faces are cute, but not when they are bare. It's a fun play on words and a friendly reminder to continue to wear masks. Keep your distance and wash your hands. This line will be placed in parks soon and just as a friendly reminder to visitors to do their part to keep our community safe while out in public. And next I'll go over some city services that have been adapted to accommodate our residents during COVID. First being CityNet Services. CityNet continues to provide new installations and follows all COVID safety protocols to protect our employees and residents. Most recently, CityNet team has launched the whole home wifi, which Most recently, CityNet team has launched the whole-home Wi-Fi with most advanced Wi-Fi bandwidth everywhere. Um, in a respective home that signs up for the services. Appointments and customer service are available and can easily be reached at 650-616-3100. Um, and while our, our San Bruno library remains closed to the public, the library team will soon resume curbside pickup. This is a really popular program. Um, so it will begin on February 1st. You can visit curbside.stanbrunolibrary.org or you can call them directly uh, to schedule a pickup or learn more about the program. That's at 616-7078. This and other library programs are available on the library website, which is www.stanbrunolibrary.org. Um, or the general line that I just mentioned, 7078 is applicable. One of the popular programs um, that is scheduled to be held in February is Black History Month. Um, you will find recommended lists of books and documentaries that acknowledge the African-American history in the United States. Material is available through the curbside pickup program and the recommendations are appropriate for kids, teens and adults alike. So it's a fun way to learn and spend some family time together. And when you're ready to put your book down and dance, the traditional father and daughter dance has adapted to a dance competition for all ages. Congor, choreograph or wing your dance, but whatever you do, get it recorded and submitted to our recreation services team. That's at sbcs@sanbruno.ca.gov. That is an ongoing event, so it's anytime between February 1st and February 27th. And while this is not a city service, the slide on the screen um, supports our local businesses and so I want to make sure that I get an opportunity to share it. The California Small Business Relief Grant opens up for round two on February 2nd. So it's a short, one-week-ish window. Um, but approval notifications will be on a rolling basis and applicants that uh, apply during the first round um, and didn't get approved but are still eligible do not need to reapply. So this is a great opportunity for small businesses um, that are in need of funding. And what's not on the screen, because it was released earlier this afternoon, um, but worth noting to the community. The county announced a new restaurant brewery and winery relief program. It's another funding opportunity for those impacted by COVID-19 and specifically restaurants. That application period um, will or is expected to open in the middle of February. And so that's something that restaurant owners should pay attention to. Um, information will be released on smcstrong.org, another resource for our local businesses. And lastly, please stay connected, sign up for our SMC Alert notifications, follow our official city account um, on social media and that includes Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have and I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your report. Any uh, questions or from colleagues? Not seeing any. We'll, we'll all, the council will uh, thank you and staff for, for all your efforts and work. And we're gonna move on to, again, under announcements and presentations, item B. Presentation on a standardized evacuation planning project. As our fire chief, uh, will be leading this.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, REA, your fire chief. I'm here this evening to introduce the council and our residents to what we call the standardized evacuation planning project. Um, you might be asking the question, what is the standardized evacuation project? Well, this is a county-wide project that's uh, really been developed to uh, develop emergency evacuation zones to, to aid in times of need and disasters uh, when we have very little time to move people out of harm's way. And this project itself was funded by the county of San Mateo and it was developed by all fire and law enforcement agencies across San Mateo County. Um, by those law enforcement and fire agencies and also by a contractor that the county hired called Zone Haven. So our agenda for the presentation tonight is we're gonna review what the wildfire problem is. I say wildfire and that's kind of the nexus of how this project was developed. But the same platform can be used in other situations that require us to move people rapidly. Um, and you'll see the value of that as we move along in the presentation. Uh, we're gonna provide an overview of that standardized evacuation project in San Mateo County and talk about some of our next steps in implementing, implementing the uh, project and create an opportunity for the council to ask questions. So the wildfire problem. In today's day, uh, you know, we have um, fast-moving wildfires and it really is highlighted the need for a change in the way we move people in a mass way during these fast-moving emergencies. Um, some of the recent fires in recent years, the Tubbs Fire that impacted Napa, Sonoma and Lake Counties and the Camp Fire in Butte County have been really highlighting the awareness and need to move people quickly in these type of events. And historically, these evacuations were planned on honestly the hood of a pickup truck. Uh, local battalion chief, uh, who's in charge of those first phases of the incident would literally get on the hood of a pickup truck, drawing, hand-drawing on a map and trying to articulate and communicate those areas that they need to evacuate to somebody to get the message out to the public. And that is obviously a slow, arduous process that's not very effective. And in today's modern world, with some of the fires moving as fast as they do, it's really problematic. So we needed to think of a new way. So um, some of our firefighting in the, what we call the initial attack phases, and that's that first phase of putting out these fires, is really not effective. So we really work, because the resources are not there to support the incident in the early phases. We really are in a, in a mode where we're moving people out of harm's way. Um, so this requires multi-agency coordination and command and control. So between law enforcement, fire and public safety officials. Um, it requires evacuation uh, earlier in larger areas because these incidents are really so fast-moving. Uh, traffic congestion is now, uh, you know, it's really important that we coordinate some of the issues so we can move uh, traffic in a single direction, so we don't have traffic that opposes each other and causes congestion and accidents. And we also need to address the vulnerable populations in our communities. Um, this picture itself um, is just a, a highlight from a wildland perspective, something we never really thought of uh, before in the past is, uh, we can have a small fire, but if it gets into buildings, now the buildings are considered a fuel. So uh, this is a picture from the Tubbs Fire in Santa Rosa, the north end of Santa Rosa. I actually went to, uh, to this fire and the top was prior to the incident itself. And you can see that the entire neighborhood is just foundations. So we really changed uh, the model um, with climate change and things like that in these fast-moving fires, where it's important for us to be able to move people quickly to get them out of harm's way. And these are things that in, you know, 20, 30 years ago were very rare events and now they've become common occurrences. So many agencies throughout the state are suffering the same problem, right? They have the same issues that we do. San Mateo County was the first to implement the Zone Haven platform to standardize our, our emergency evacuations. Other counties are following our lead, including Santa Cruz, Sonoma, Napa, Marin, Yuba and other small jurisdictions throughout the state of California. The next slide you have before you is, is really meant to talk about um, the way the public gets evacuation information. Um, we have a variety of ways we message the public. We have our regular 911 and reverse 911 systems. We use ma, mass notification systems like SMC Alert, IPaaS and WIA. Social media, uh, direct contact from first responders. We try to use websites and other news media outlets to get the information out. Um, but again, it's, it's, it's difficult to, you know, quickly move that information to the public. Um, and these traditional methods of social media and press releases are slow and don't really adequately address the need. So this newer technology has really been developed um, to work with some of these opt-in and non-opt-in systems like IPaaS and WIA, the Integrated Public Alert Warning System and what they call WIA or the Wireless Emergency Alerts. And those are the same things like you would get an Amber Alert on your cell phone. So local, state and uh, uh, so state and local law enforcement agencies and fire agencies typically work together to collaborate during these events. Um, and it's important that we have this unified approach to dealing with these emergencies. The standard evacuation project really creates a seamless platform where we, uh, where public safety agencies can coordinate. And the public-facing side of the standard evacuation's planning platform, which is, is developed, provides a single place where citizens can view areas that are being evacuated. And in fact, the same uh, platform, Zone Haven, is being uh, used today as we speak uh, with the mudslide and debris flow uh, that are occurring from the CZU complex. If anybody's seen the SMC Alert that's gone out today evacuating residents on the south coast of San Mateo County. So I talked about uh, conducting these evacuation zones on the hood of a pickup truck. These are pretty ad hoc ways to do business. Um, each event is unique and decided really um, rapidly, you know, as quick as we can put the plan together. But again, we have to articulate that to the public. So the idea here is to use, um, instead of going from a major incident occurring, as you see on the, on the left of the screen, going down to a planning session and then pushing it out through those platforms. The idea really here is to have a one-click platform. So this one-click platform is a platform that all agencies could use to coordinate evacuations with stakeholders. And what we're really attempting to do here is use an opportunity when we have discretionary time, not during an emergency, to plan out these zones, pre-identify them, pre-identify critical infrastructure in our communities um, and use those things and basically put them into play when the emergency happens. So this solution, uh, it will work beyond San Mateo County. Uh, those other counties that I, I spoke about earlier are already developing these platforms and we see their evacuation zones and they can see ours. It's a real-time map-based platform that allows everybody to see, including the public, where the evacuation zones are to avoid confusion. It's a tool that's integrated with existing information channels. All those same platforms we would normally use are tied directly into this platform. It was, it's really meant to reduce the complications and time it takes to get public moving faster towards evacuation. And um, it, it, it's really designed to put and aggregate local knowledge. So if a, a fire department from another jurisdiction comes here to us, assist us in evacuations, they can see all of the critical infrastructure, the number of residents in the neighborhood and the evacuation routes that we have pre-identified. And this uh, tool has been again made uh, available to the public and it's gonna allow for those mutually resources to also know our evacuation routes. So when I said one-click platform, the other slide I had previously, you'd noticed was very similar. But what we're doing now is we have the emergency on the left. We're gonna utilize the Zone Haven uh, standardized evacuation platform, which you see there on the right. It's gonna automatically integrate with those other alerting systems and make the, the notification to the public. And that can be done by the incident commander in the field. And I'm talking about the very first battalion chief sergeant from the police department that arrives on scene. Uh, we have firefighters that are, have credentials to the system and can make those notifications and initiate those evacuations as well as our police department personnel. So the, the, the idea of this evening's presentation would just to, to warm up the council and the, the public to the idea of the, of the Zone Haven uh, platform and these emergency evacuations. Uh, we are uh, for next steps, working on developing a, what they call a know-your-zone campaign. It's really identified to uh, or developed to uh, train the public on knowing which zone they live in, where their evacuation routes are. And then we're working on a, a plan for community messaging and developing a video explaining the evacuation process and the platform and kind of next steps uh, for uh, that process in case there's a, a large-scale emergency. And again, um, this is not just for fires, it's not just uh, for wildfires, it's for all different types of emergencies. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over briefly to Chief Ryan Johansson for some closing comments and a wrap-up.
Please, Chief Johansson.
Uh, thank you, Ari. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and members of the community. I'll be brief, but just a few points to add to the wonderful presentation that our fire chief has already provided to you. Um, both, I, I have a couple of things to add to this because I've experienced use of this system both professionally and personally. Um, my family was evacuated in the recent fires in the Santa Cruz Mountains. And I can tell you that it was a totally different experience having firsthand information, real-time information up to date, letting us know when it was time to leave, when we were in the warning zone, when it was time to actually leave now. And then once we were gone from our house for almost two weeks, uh, having regular updated information about when we were gonna be able to come back. And it's kind of important to understand that none of this existed before uh, these teams of firefighters got together and put this system together. I mean, you, you were really quite in the dark and um, you were waiting for mass media to pick up these incidents. And you know, if it's a relatively small incident or they're going on all over the place, often, you know, smaller jurisdictions like ours don't get that mass media attention where you can rely on the information you're getting in the news. So personally, I found it hugely valuable. I've in fact been using it for the last 24 hours because I'm again in an evacuation warning zone due to the debris slides up here in Santa Cruz. And I can really tell you firsthand, it's a really phenomenal program. From the police perspective, just to highlight a couple of things that our fire chief already told you, right? Evacuations are actually really quite complicated because of all these different uh, entities that are working together. And as a law enforcement entity showing up to these incidents, we're gonna facilitate almost every single evacuated residence or business or every person that needs to be moved. But it's gonna be at the direction of fire because they're the experts who know what direction these fires and threats are moving in. And so if you think about how that works practically, you saw some pictures there, like we all have to show up at one location, have a fire battalion chief or captain or expert there tell us where we're evacuating and in what order. And then you have to deploy a bunch of police officers who are not firefighters and don't know how to track these hazards and know where the, the greatest risk is at any given moment to go out and facilitate those evacuations. Well, now with a click of a button, right, this fire battalion chief can send information to all of the police officers without them having to be centrally located at this command post telling them, here's the evacuation plan, here's the priority zones. And at the same time, instead of waiting for an officer to literally knock on your door and tell you to leave, you're gonna get a notification telling you, hey, please evacuate. So now police are catching those that don't get caught in that initial net instead of being the only source of, of reliable information telling you to get out of your home. And even if you have a massive response of officers, I mean, Ari told you that he responded to some of the larger fires. I, I worked the fires in Sonoma and the fires out in Paradise and the massive undertaking of an evacuation is terrifying because you know that every house you don't get to is potential life loss. And, and this is a really revolutionary system that we're very fortunate to have. And, and I think that our fire chief kind of understates the amount of work that he and his staff put into getting together to make sure that, that the real work goes into the front end, right? What's basically happened is evacuation planning on a very robust level has now occurred in a vacuum where you can actually slow down and not be pressured by an actual live incident and think constructively, not just about who to evacuate and when, but what are the ingress and egress routes? And for me, from the law enforcement perspective, that's the most important component. When you look at a fire like in Paradise, there was a lot of life loss while people were trying to get out. And that's really terrifying, right? Well, what Ari and his teams have done now is, is gotten together with PD and said, how do we give people different evacuation routes from the same neighborhoods to ensure they don't bottleneck all into one intersection and can't get out when they need to? And so this really has taken a lot of pre-planning into saying, hey, here's a giant area. For instance, we can take Glenview, Glenview for obvious reasons. And it divides it up and says, these residents will flee this way in this type of an emergency. These residents will flee this way and that information comes through in that notification. So not just a get out, but a get out and here's the way to get out. It, it's really, really quite powerful and really changes drastically the way that we do things. Um, the other piece about it is it's scalable. Most evacuations, we've been kind of hesitant to use in the past because it can create a lot of alarm or we have to do something much larger scale than what's necessary for a given emergency. And this gives us a very scalable solution that says something very simple, like a, a residential gas leak. We can use this system to facilitate a really small evacuation or to facilitate evacuation of the entire city in a much larger event, like maybe an emergency up, up at our water treatment plant. So really, really a ton of great work that went in here, uh, very much led by fire and their staff um, with some participation from PD when it was needed. We're really, really excited about it and I, and I think that is something that bottom line is gonna save lives when, as we know all too well, the inevitable events come to our little town. So with that, I will close up and I think uh, the fire chief's probably your best resource for questions, but I'll remain on in case there's anything I can help with.
Thank you, Chiefs. Uh, any questions or comments from colleagues? Uh, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yeah, yeah, this sounds really great. Um, will, when will, when will we test this?
Chief?
When will we test it? So that's, that's gonna be part of the process. COVID is obviously gonna play an important piece of it. Um, communities- Communities across the Bay Area region have actually, just prior to COVID, started doing some testing. And our plan would be to kind of get primed up for fire season, next fire season, truthfully, is probably going to be our best bet. And there's opportunities, I'm working with another agency across the bay to, to kind of do a run-through of what they've done of virtual evacuation notice, to kind of warm up again the community and kind of get them in the routine of knowing this platform, knowing where it is, how to get to it, and how they're going to interact. So my hope is to get something done by midsummer.
Seeing no one else on council, once again, Chiefs, thank you for your comments. And please, Chief, thank you for expressing what you, you've dealt with on a personal basis because it's very interesting to see it in both ends, as, as it worked for your family, but as, as it's going to work for our community and our county. And Fire Chief, I know you've put a lot of time and effort, and your team has, and I know this is one of those things that you, you enjoy, and you enjoy this technical, and it really, from what I've seen and what the emergency services, council will see, it is, it was, it is quite, it's come a long way, it will save lives, bottom line. So thank you to both. We're going to go ahead and move on to item C. Receive community grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation. We're going to be, Leslie.
Actually, we are bringing over Emily Roberts, who is, yes, so I'm bringing her over now.
Robert, Madam Chair.
Yeah, hello all. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members and members of the public. Happy to be here. I'm Emily Roberts, the current president of the San Bruno Community Foundation. And as stated, I'm here tonight to share some good news regarding the San Bruno Community Foundation Grants Program. As you all know, council members, I know, know, but perhaps as a reminder to the public, the city council created the foundation to administer the $70 million in restitution funds received from PJNE as part of the settlement from the 2010 gas pipeline explosion. And the foundation created the community grants fund in order to share some of those restitution funds back with local organizations, including programs of the city of San Bruno that work to support and sustain the San Bruno community and are doing important work to improve the quality of life here in our city. And so this year, the foundation is funding two community grants to the city, one to support the city's library and one to fund the purchase of lightweight and portable lifesaving tools and equipment for the city's fire department. Both departments and needs well highlighted in earlier presentations tonight, in fact. These programs were among a competitive pool of grant applications that the foundation received by the community grant September 30th deadline. And a review panel of volunteers, including community members and individuals with nonprofit and grant-making experience, reviewed and evaluated the applications, ultimately recommending the board-approved grants to 23 projects. Our board approved those 23 grants totaling $300,000 on December 2nd. We are thrilled that YouTube, Google.org has also partnered with the foundation on the community grants fund yet again this year and has provided $100,000 of the total $300,000 in grant funds being distributed. So with that, and on behalf of the San Bruno Community Foundation this evening, I'm pleased to present the city of San Bruno with two grant checks. I'm doing the sweepstakes style with the virtual format we have here. So here is your first check that I'll hold up. And the first is in the amount of $10,000 and will enable the San Bruno library to purchase more than 100 additional titles of popular ebook and e-audio materials available for San Bruno residents and to enable the library to provide curriculum support to San Bruno Park School district teachers through a three-year Tumble Books subscription. In a time of need for online resources during the pandemic, we know there will be even more reading opportunities provided by the library for all San Bruno residents sheltering at home. And the second, which is in the amount of $15,000, right here, will support a fireline paramedic program through the purchase of lifesaving tools and equipment to outfit two fireline paramedic kits and the implementation of training for San Bruno Fire Department personnel for use in more remote or rugged locations within the city and regionally, such as in the case of wildfires. And in the wake of so many fire emergencies in 2020, it's our hope that these additions will also assist in saving more lives. So with that, congratulations on your two successful proposals. We look forward to hearing about the benefits of both to the residents and the larger community. And I just want to thank you again.
Again, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. And again, the city, the staff, all of us, or the council, very appreciative for what the board does, and we appreciate the grants that have been awarded to the city, which will help this community. And as was said many times before, you know, there, this is the element that something good has come from a tragedy and a disaster that, that helps many folks going into the future. So please pass our thanks and appreciation from the council and staff to the board.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll absolutely do that. You're grateful for your support.
Okay, and have a good evening, stay dry. All right, we're going to move on to item number five, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. And just for me, I would like to just go over item E, not asking for a separate vote, just to summarize it in one new additional committee. Are there any things that council wants to have removed for a separate line item vote? Not seeing any. Are there any that we just have clarifications or questions that like to be asked? Councilmember Hamilton.
Yeah, I have about five G.
Got it. Thank you. Are there any others? Okay, seeing, seeing, I thought it was those views. Okay, why don't we go then, we'll go to item E. Receive report and confirm appointment of city council members to city council subcommittees as liaisons to advisory commission boards and committees, as well as representatives and alternates to the county in the regional capacity. So what I wanted to do is, and yes, I appreciate folks being patient and me asking the questions, what it was was to be more detailed. So very specific as to pre-COVID, where did the, where did the group meet, right? If you say they met at the county, well, where at the county? Or if they met at the transit district, specifically the second floor, the auditorium? So that anybody who comes on, that there is already a kind of the blueprint. And instead of just saying quarterly to be specific, what months, what times? And so anyway, just to get more detail, so that's why you see a lot more information on that. On the ad hoc committee assignments, they're, they're listed in self-explanatory. The one that there is a, a change and an error was on the last one, it says Clean San Bruno Action Committee, and it says Hamilton Salazar, that could be Hamilton Medina, let me clarify which one, Marty, so, so the Vice Mayor. And so what that is, and it, and it has come up, but is, you know, we, we've been talking about this and, and what's going on. So what, what I have been doing is reaching out to the council. And so as far as, you know, the three sites that we had, now there's two sites that need to be cleaned. Most people are aware of it or have communicated about it. It's also was reaching out to them to explore potentially, is there a maintenance agreement? Meaning will they let, if we do it, can we then build them back for our staff's time? Is there adopt a program? Is there an anti-littering campaign program? So there now have been folks that have been connected, and I've talked to the transit district, and that's in regards to the train and the buses, because obviously what my objective would be through this group is to empower folks. So when they see something, they'll have a resource, whether it's phone or whether it's email, to reach out and take care of it immediate, so that therefore we don't have a time by, well, I'll take care of that next week. So I think that's, that's kind of the process I was going. Also, as you folks know, in October, we had a, a, a day over here, on October 17th, a lot of you were there and helped and appreciate it. But what needs to be done is that we may not find ourselves in a May clean sweep again, potentially. So what was, suggested is in April, having another day, but larger scale, with ecology and having, because we have a lot of e-waste and a lot of paint. And we basically need more, you know, more space physically and more the ability to accept and get that in. With that said, I was going to ask Seth Salazar and myself, we can just work on that one topic quickly and let then the others work about how we can, as we heard a lot of positive comments tonight on it. And I'll, I can continue to find the connections within the county and then forward that so we can kind of come up with a campaign. And I think it was mentioned Saturday, but it's one of the things I didn't realize, but our garbage cans. So they should be here to maintain the garbage inside, but a lot of them are here. And then, so you have animals that are getting into it, you have it thrown, and that's been brought up, that that has increased quite a bit. And I think the garbage company's been trying to be understanding during COVID, but at some point, this is trying, we've got to stop the source at the source. And honestly, we have to do it if we think back to a long time ago with graffiti. We had a graffiti major problem in here. We enacted some new ordinances, a new program, a new system, a contact, and, and we got it under control. There was also educating people to want to be engaged and involved. It was also that it's not okay to put something on the sidewalk and have it for free, and then that free thing stays there to two to three weeks. And then it's not free anymore, it becomes, you need to take care of it. So that, that's, that's what I'm, I'm hoping that that will encompass and do, and I think it's time and with what's happening, I appreciate everybody doing that. For the regional bodies, I appreciate it because it's a little more equitable this time, so somebody's not taking on too many, but we are all going to need some alternates. So kind of review the document, see what we can help each other.
Mayor Medina, would you like, I'm sorry to interrupt, would you like me to pull up this spreadsheet so that you could review it?
No, 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 thank you. So what I, I would ask is that we all try to help each other because these are important bodies, we need to be at at the regional level, and they're important for us being engaged. So thank you for your patience and listening to me ramble. So I appreciate it all. And that is for E, but I have our council member, Hamilton, on G. Receive report and adopt resolution accepting annual report on receipt and use of development impact fees, fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, just have a question on, on this, hopefully it's a quick one. Since we don't levy an impact fee for stormwater usage, can we confirm that for all the projects that we collected impact fees for in 2020 that are encompassed in this report, that all of them will mitigate 100% of their stormwater and don't send outflow into the, into the stormwater system? It seemed like a timely, a timely question because of all the discussions we're having about stormwater.
City Manager.
Councilmember, in general, yes, it is true that new projects have to mitigate 100% of the additional stormwater runoff that they're creating. There are sort of nuances with every project, and so I hesitate to make a global statement of what you alluded to, but, but you're absolutely right. In general, new, new projects have to create retention basins or do something else to either treat or use the additional stormwater that they're creating. There are caveats where sometimes that may not occur. With all the projects, I just don't have the knowledge on what happened.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, are there any other questions or action on items A through G?
Yes, I just had a question. First of all, I wanted to just thank everybody who worked on this chart. It's under our umbrella of stronger governance. I think it really clarifies what the committee and appointments are and board appointments. I wanted to also just congratulate Councilmember Salazar for his appointment to the Legislative Committee. I think it's really important that we have representation on these regional, regional boards, regional committees, because Sam, let's face it, if you don't have a seat at the table, you don't really have a voice. So I think that's great. And then I also just wanted to ask for the appointments that we received, will somebody be reaching out this year as part of our strength in governance to let us know when the first meeting is that we should be attending for each one of these appointments?
The answer is yes. So the agencies ask the clerk, who are the representatives? And then that's placed forward with them, and then their rosters are updated, and then information will be sent. And one of your cases, I called Seth Miller myself just to say, hey, can you forward me that because I'm trying to put together this, this graph of staff? So, but yes, that's, that's been the process since I've started. And so yes, they, they will forward this information once there's action, as in some of the cases, it actually has to have our approval before they can actually notify. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, Mayor Medina, I just wanted to thank you for, kind of, we're thinking along the same lines here about this, for the, yeah, for the, for working with our community, find, find better solutions to why it's happening and how we can solve it. And, and it's going to take a lot of effort. I just wanted to make sure that this subcommittee will be able to meet with the public, also to get their input and come up with solutions and education programs, our suggested education programs, working with our schools. Because a lot of this problem, a lot of this littering is, it's done by us, you know, it's just people not, pretty much disregarding our community and, and, and so how we come up with that. And so I just wanted to thank you for that. And the other thing is making sure that we do have alternates for, and it's the clean energy, and, and pretty much everything else, so that in case one of us can't make it, these meetings, and there's always somebody available, so we always have somebody at the table. Because not all these, these committees, they, they don't meet that frequently. And so if, if you don't show up, then we're not heard. And, and I think another thing to stress is, is as we look into our community, our council policies and procedures, is making sure how we report back to the full council so that not only is the council aware of it, but the community's aware of what, what's happening with all of these different boards, commissions, and agencies. So I just wanted to make sure, and thank you, thank you for, for, for doing this.
No, thank you for your comments, and it is important, as a good example through this detail is PCE, which Salazar was the alternate. Well, he's also already committed as the delegate to another agency. So one night when he was recused, he actually, because he could Zoom, he attended both meetings. But in normal times, when we're driving around, that, that wouldn't have been possible. So that's why I really encourage, and Vice Mayor is correct, some of them, some of them meet four times, six times a year. Some of them are very timed sensitive, they only last an hour and a half and that's, and they stop it. So I would really encourage all of us to look at those, and, and you are right. I know just even with me, when we have an agenda, I try to cut and paste that with action items and send that out to council. Sometimes they're important things for us all to know. But, but thank you for those comments. And, and maybe to the Vice Mayor and to the council member, maybe you can collaborate a little bit with staff, so everybody's on the same page, so that we all go at it the same direction as, as you and I talked about Caltrans today, Vice Mayor, which I appreciate it, because they, they got a phone call from me, a second one, and wasn't as, as patient as the first. But, but they need to set an expectation, and we need to get them what our expectation is for this community. So thank you. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Ham, Member Hamilton, is that a new hand or from the?
Just a quick question. So, so looking at this and looking at for, through some of the, some of the, the, the external commissions that require alternates, if we want to volunteer for, for one of the empty slots, should we just email, email you and the rest of the council?
Yes, I would, I would appreciate that, or at least me or the city clerk, but at least we'll know we've got each other covered.
Got it.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Mesa.
Sorry, just to save staff time, you, you might want to check in with City Attorney Zeparano. I had previously asked for all the maintenance agreements. I had previously asked for all the maintenance agreements that we have. And my understanding is that they don't, that we don't have any maintenance agreements right now with some of the agencies that are honestly causing the most blight in our community. So just to save time, just FYI, thank you.
Okay, all right, any action on consent, please?
With Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the entirety of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Salazar, Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you all. Now we will move on to item six, conduct of business, City Clerk.
Item six A, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with West Yost Associates to update the urban water management plan in an amount not to exceed $84,000, $84,370.
Director Tan.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I do have a brief presentation on this topic to share. Let's see here. All right. See, y'all see my, part of my presentation? Perfect. Okay, so the objective of the item in front of you tonight is to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with West Yost Associates to update the urban water management plan in an amount not to exceed $84,370. The agenda is as follows. I'll provide a brief background on the urban water management plan and provide you with information on what is urban, urban water management plan? And why is it required? What are the key elements in the document? Then I'll discuss how we selected the firm that will be assisting the city with the plan? And then the fiscal impact? And then I'll go over the alternatives and next steps and last the staff's recommendation. So what is an urban water management plan? The urban water management plan is a state mandated document that requires water suppliers to assess the long-range water supply and demand over a 20-year period. The city last completed the, the plan in 2015. It was adopted by council back in June of 2016 after public notification and hearing process. The document is a planning tool to ensure there's adequate availability and reliability of water supply to meet both current and projected future water demands. The document also serves as the foundational document for water supply assessments, and those are required by SB or Senate Bill 221 and Senate Bill 610 for certain projects, usually larger projects that has more than 500 homes. And then they have to refer to the urban water management plan for various water assessments. So why is it required? In 1983, the Californian Legislature enacted the Urban Water Management Planning Act. And the law required urban water suppliers who served more than 3,000 customers or provide more than 3,000 acre feet per year of water supply to adopt this plan. It is required to be updated every five years and submitted to the Department of Water Resources for review. And the plan is required in order for the water supplier to be eligible for DWR, Department of Water Resources grants, loans and any drought assistance. And the city is an urban water supplier. We currently serve about 11,400 water connections. And as previously mentioned, the, the previous document was adopted back in June 2016. So what are the key elements included in the plan? The plan will assess, you know, the current and projected water use over a 20-year horizon. Long-term planning documents such as the general plan and specific plans will be reviewed. And the water demands will be assessed. The plan will also analyze potable and non-potable water supplies. The plan will review the city's water supply from San Francisco, you know, public utilities, the commission and water production from groundwater wells. The plan will also prepare what's called a drought risk assessment. And this DRA requires water suppliers to assess water supply reliability over a five-year period. And that examines, you know, water supplies and water uses and reliability under a prediction, a reasonable prediction for drought, you know, for five consecutive dry years. The water code also now requires the suppliers to address seismic risk to various water system facilities and to have a mitigation plan. And therefore, seismic risk of water systems, facilities will be evaluated. And the plan will also develop an effective water shortage contingency plan. And this plan is a document that provides the water suppliers with an action plan for a drought or during a major water supply shortage. So in order to select the consultants, we issued the request proposal, RFP, back in October 2020. The city received two proposals, one from West and Associates Engineering and the other from West Yost Associates. Staff reviewed both of the proposals on whether the firms understood the, the project and their approach to executing the project. Staff also reviewed the firm's qualifications and experience of the project manager as well as the entire team. And staff also determined whether the firms had qualifications related to the development of this urban water management plan. And based on staff's evaluation, staff is recommending West Yost Associates to complete the, the plan for the city. And this West Yost Associates project team has intimate knowledge of the statewide and, and regional water quality, water issues, and has demonstrated a track record of developing these urban water management plans. And they have also done a water supply assessment as well, and as well as hydraulic analysis for various different agencies in Northern California, including Fresno, Modesto, Sacramento, Santa Rosa, and Blumen, as well as other water districts. And the firm also completed the San Bruno's, the city's 2015 urban water management plan. So as for the fiscal impact, you know, the fiscal year 2020, 21 water operating budget includes a budget of $100,000 to complete the plan. And the current contract with West Yost Associates is $84,370. Therefore, no additional appropriation is being requested. As for the alternatives, there are two. The council can direct further review of the submitted proposals for selection of a different firm from the proposals. And then we call or request the staff to issue a new RFP. As for the next steps, once the council authorized the word of this contract, staff will coordinate with the project team and have a kickoff meeting with the firm. Staff will work with the firm to complete the urban water management plan within about six months. Then staff will form the public notification and hold public hearing process. Then the document will be adopted and finally submitted to the Department of Water Resources. So as for tonight, staff is recommending to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with West Yost Associates to update the urban water management plan in an amount not to exceed $84,370. This concludes my presentation and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Tan. Any questions or discussion from colleagues?
I have a question.
Councilmember Mason.
To the mayor, thank you for the presentation. Is there, I had previously requested that when these plans come to us, that we also receive an update on what has been accomplished in the existing plan? Do we have any idea of what, I believe you said the original was 2016? Do we have any idea of what has been accomplished since 2016?
Yeah, this is, this document is very different from the, the water master plan document that you, you know, that you're, you know, mentioning, Councilmember Mason. This one actually is, is more of a, a, a plan to guide, you know, developers and for the city to have some sort of a long-range goals to, to determine what our water supply needs are here in the city. So, you know, this would actually have a lot of information related to some of our, you know, current and future developments and what's been, you know, allocated or what's been included as part of the actual overall demand assessments and water supply assessment. So there's really no, like, recommendations, like for projects per se, like in a water master plan. So it's a little bit different with, from that document.
So is this also, how, how would you say this is different from the water system master plan that we approved for $238,000 last January?
Correct. So the water master, system master plan is a, a document that actually assesses the actual distribution system of our, of our water. So the consultant would do a hydraulic analysis, determine, you know, what the capacity needs are or the fire flow needs are, you know, within the city, right? Or then through that, recommendations will be provided for, you know, short-term, long-term goals. So there'll be a lot of different, various different projects that will be determined as part of that. You know, will there be, you know, replacement of various different pipelines to meet fire flow analysis, replacement of tanks because they don't meet the age, you know, did they extended their useful life of the tanks? And or upgrades of some of the pump stations because they don't meet the, the future demands per se that maybe have to upsize the pump station. So it's a little bit different from this document. This is a state mandated document that actually looks at the long-range, you know, water supply and, and the needs, you know, for the city.
So then if it's, if it's not as specific, I guess, what, how do, how would we know that we're following the plan?
So the Department of Water Resources actually has a, a table of content that requires every single urban water, you know, supplier to actually follow that. So what, the consultant has the, you know, information and they have, they've been doing this for many, many years. So they have to follow the guidelines that's included as part of the DWR because this whole document has to be submitted to the DWR for their final review to ensure that all the requirements that they're requiring is included as part of the plan.
Okay, so, so the, my, my question, I, I understand that it's required. I think my question is more around it's required. My guess would be that it's required because they want action to be taken or they want to make sure that we're following the mandates or the state guidelines. So what is the measure that's being taken to make sure that it's, that check, you know, we've, we've submitted the plan? But what's the measure being taken to make sure that we in fact are in compliance with, what the mandate is or the regulations are?
Sure, through the, through the mayor, Mayor respond?
Yes, City Manager.
Sure, City Manager Javon Grogan. Councilmember Mason, let me try and parse the issue. So the plan we're talking about tonight is a urban water management plan. And even though it's called a plan, it's not the type of plan that has deliverables that we need to execute upon. It's a state mandate that ensures that we have identified that we have a long-term water resource to cover both our current and projected need. And so what we're here tonight to do is to get authorization to do that plan. Once that plan is complete, it comes back to the city council for adoption. So you get to see the, the plan. And then we submit it to the state saying we have complied with your mandate that we do a plan. If we don't do this plan, the hook is that we can't apply for grants, loans and other drought tolerant assistance from the Department of Water Resources. That is distinctly different from our water system master plan that has embedded within it specific projects that we need to do and fund over a horizon. And when you requested that information, what we took that to mean is that our master plan that called for us to do work as a city, when we bring those back to you for extension, we will report on, the last master plan was done, for example, five years ago. Here are the projects we've done, but we haven't been done. This is just a distinctly different type of plan. It's essentially a state requirement saying that we have identified that we have long-term resources to cover the build-out both currently and in the future. And your knowledge on that, you've done that, is when the plan comes back to you and we submit that to the state.
So is there a plan for the build-out?
So the build-out happens as private developers purchase property or come to the planning department and says, hey, I want to build on this vacant lot. And so we make sure that there's a connection fee for that. But we, when, when that happens, that property, let's say it was zoned for multifamily, right? We, because we've done this plan, we have already accounted for the water generation that would happen by that parcel that's developed. And so there's not sort of a direct linkage when, of when development happens to this plan.
Okay, I'll, I'll hold my other questions.
Is there anybody else, any other colleagues have questions? Okay, Councilmember Mason, you said you were holding questions, so this would be the time.
I don't know if there's any public comment.
Okay. I'm seeing no hands, Councilmember Mason. And maybe I'll give them an opportunity if they do, they can, as you're asking yours. I do have one, but let's give them a minute too, just so others may wish to come in. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. So basically, as the city is projecting its growth, we, we have to make sure that we have enough water to serve it. And this plan goes through and identifies, and I think the biggest thing is making sure that we conserve water. And, and there was a big 20% reduction requirement that had to be met by 2020. And I believe the plan did show by the numbers. And I could ask the director that we, we made that 20% reduction. It seemed like it was a pretty easy get from, from people, basically. And yours is truly here. I reduced my water usage, you know, I changed, I changed out my lawn and put in something different that, that was drought resistant. And, and I think a lot of people have done that, that they're really being careful on, on, on their water usage, being, being that we got out of a drought. We're kind of back in one and again, but here we are, talking about it and it's raining, it's raining. But people are really concerned about the cost of their water, so they're, they're, they're reducing the use. So my question is, is that, that the 20% reduction, that, that seems to be one of the bigger things there. And, and that's, the question is, is that still on target to be met?
Director.
Yeah, so you're talking about, I'm trying to understand the question, Councilmember Medina. You're talking about the, the water conservation efforts, that, the percentage efforts? And that will be, you know, a study as part of this plan as well, and so it will be included. And yet just, again, it's overall plan is to look at the long-range horizon, right? Because the city actually has what is a, a limited amount of water supply from SAPUC and then our wells. And so, you know, taking that into account and plus all of the developments that may be happening in the city, you know, do we have enough water supply to meet that long-range goal? Is, this is what the entire, entirety of this plan is, is about. Plus the water conservation efforts. And, and what do we do during drought, for instance?
Right, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so, so it was projected that we were going to have a reduction and this plan's going to verify that, that, that we met our goal in the conservation of, of that reduction. So it's really very different from, from the technical nature of engineering of how our water system operates and what's recommended. This is just, in my view, pretty much showing that we do have enough water to, to keep, to keep our city supplied within the future as we grow.
Correct.
Agreed. All right, we have a member of the public, City Clerk, if you can bring in Mr. Smith? And then we'll turn it back to council, or we'll go back to Councilmember Mason and add follow-up questions.
Just one moment, Mr. Smith, I'm trying to get you unmuted. Mr. Smith, are you able to unmute yourself? I can't do it on my end, it's not allowing me to.
I'm unmuted, uh-huh, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, really quick question, I just don't really, on this, on this plan, the contract, it's just a plan, right? There's no actual, there's no actual project. Thank you. Developing a plan and not developing, and that's it, thank you. Okay, did staff catch that? I know it is a little breaking up, but maybe it's the storm. I, I think there was just clarification and colleagues, you can help me if there was...
I'm still here if you want to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The question was very simply, my, I'm just trying to understand that this plan not to exceed 84,370 is to, is to update, there's no actual projects involved to execute. There's no groundbreaking, no work to do as far as constructing anything. It's just a plan to update. And urban water management plan that's already existing, it's not building.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, you're breaking up pretty badly. I just went back on mute.
Okay, let's try it one more time. How about now?
Okay.
Okay, so, so I'm sorry about this. So I'm closer as, as I can get. So, so the question is about the plan, the urban water management plan, the amount not to exceed 84,370 is just for a plan to update an existing plan? And, and it's not to do any groundbreaking work or to build, do any builds or any kind of, any kind of like physical work? It's just to actually create a plan or update the plan? It's not creating a plan from scratch? Am I to understand that correctly? And that's my question.
Thank you for your input. Director Tan, can you...
Yeah, that's correct, you know, because every five years, the city is required to update this urban water management plan. So the last one was done in, or completed in 2015. And so that document will be updated to the current plan with the current requirements by the DDR. And so there aren't any projects per se, you know, like you have to build this pipeline over here or you have to upgrade this pump station. No, that's not part of this plan. It's, it's, it's the, it's more of a, a long-range study to determine, you know, whether the city will have adequate water supply, you know, in 20 years down the horizon with, you know, developments that are being proposed, you know, in the city in the future.
Thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, sorry, I had to switch over. First I have Councilmember Salazar, and then we're going to go to Councilmember Mason, please.
All right, thank you. So Jimmy, thanks for, for the report and I went back and looked at the 2015 report just to kind of refresh myself on what, what was in there. It's a 420-page report. So first of all, thank you for not embedding that in our council packet, I really appreciate that. And the only question I had, so, so we only got two proposals back from the request and there was a pretty wide range in the, the price of the bid. And so, you know, I, I always trust staff's advice and I know that there's a lot of different factors that go into weighing which proposal is, is better, but can you maybe summarize, you know, what, what some of the major points were that, that led towards selecting West Hills? And I know they did the original one, they're clearly more qualified. You know, and, and, and listening to the, you know, the public comment, I, I know that a lot of evaluation goes into this, so it's really not just updating the report, it's really, you, you have to do a lot of evaluation of the system and you have to understand, you know, what components are in place, where the water's coming from, what's being purchased, what's being pumped. So I, I get the complexity that goes into it, but I, I just wanted to get a little bit of a clarification on, you know, the justification for going with the more expensive option.
Sure, there are two firms that submitted a proposal through the RFP process and, you know, West Hills and West, and Associates. And, you know, the city had reviewed, you know, always, you know, reviews based on qualifications and of course we do take into account, you know, costs for these proposals as well. But the other firm, you know, didn't have quite the experience that, you know, West Hills has. And they're also based in Southern California, so, and, and they don't have a lot of the, you know, the regional, you know, issues that, you know, that they, the knowledge that West Hills has, you know, up here and working with all the various different firms, you know, different agencies, you know, that West Hills has, you know, in Northern California. So I know sometimes, and then when we were looking at the, the proposal, it was somewhat interesting that the, you know, the labor hours for the, you know, the other proposals were a lot more than what West Hills had in their, in their proposal. You know, the other proposal had 400 hours versus West Hills only had 358, but, but West Hills, you know, of course, you know, the labor efforts or labor rates were a little bit higher than what the other firm was. And so, you know, we do, we did have to kind of evaluate that and, and we determined that, you know, even though, you know, the person, you know, West Hills was a little bit more costly, but, you know, they, we, they have done a great job for the city in the past and then we haven't run into any issues. And, and sometimes bringing a new firm on board, you know, will take a lot of effort into, you know, kind of learning, you know, our system and then we'll spend, have to spend more time, you know, trying to work with the consultants, you know, to do that, so.
Understood, okay. I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, so I'm trying to still see, I think that the issue, I want to be clear, isn't whether it's due to the state or not. I don't have a concern around that. I, I just want to make sure it's clear what works being done on the investment that the city has already made into the existing plan. And so from what I'm hearing, you're saying that it's, that there's absolutely no deliverables in that plan, that the only thing that plan is, is really a report to the state on where we are? Is that, is that a synopsis? Because I, I do want to make sure there's no deliverables in the, in the plan.
Director Tan?
Manager?
Sure, Javon Grogan, city manager again. There are no project deliverables as in things that we need to improve in our system. There are in the plan targets to be met. We do not know if we've met those targets until we update the plan. When the plan comes back to you, it will say where we are on the targets that were in the 2015 plan. For example, as Councilmember Medina mentioned, within the 2015 plan, there is a target water reduction of 20% by 2020. In updating the plan, which we're tonight wanting to enter into contract to do, once that plan is updated, that will have within it where we are on those target metrics. We will know that when we get the plan and then we, assuming that the draft is complete and there are no errors, we will then bring that plan back to the city council and then forward that plan to the state of California and that satisfies our, that satisfies our requirement.
And then there's apparently within the plans, the, like certain, certain, I guess, I don't know if they're recommendations or requirements, but such as what, what I, I just went to the state site and read what the requirements are for the plan. So for example, one of the, one of the, one of the mentions is a water shortage contingency plan. Another one is a detailed plan of current and future water use. So are those things that you're saying that the consultants will handle in updating since a couple of years ago and we don't have anything one way or the other to determine whether this has been done already?
So my understanding is that we have data that we will provide to the consultant. They will analyze and then put together the report to ensure that we have met those metrics or at least state where we are with those metrics. And so we will again know that once we undertake an update of, of the plan. And Director Tan, is there anything that I, that I'm missing or any elaboration that you can provide? You're on mute.
Sorry, yeah, no, no, city manager Grogan mentioned it correctly and so, and, you know, there's many, many topics that will be covered as part of this, you know, urban water management plan and then those will be, you know, studied as part of this process and then brought, and information will be included as part of the plan and then brought to you, to city council. When we adopted, there will be a presentation by the consultant, you know, of all the various different topics and to let you know what, what's going on, the status.
Okay, and then I'm just wondering if this is part of the, the regular process, why this wasn't budgeted at the onset of the contract approval when the, when the original contract was let?
So the, the contract for West Hills was done five years ago when they did the 2015 plan. We did not know that they would be the contractor that we would select now. And so the normal process is we, we did the prior plan, we undertook a contract process to select them. Five years later, now we're undertaking a new contract process to select the new vendor. I think part of your question is, did we know that we would be updating our five-year plan in fiscal year 2021? Yes. Could we have made an estimate and budgeted for that around budget time? Yes. The typical method that we follow for these master plans, considering that the water fund has sufficient resources to cover it, knowing that it is over the city manager's spending authority of $70,000, is we don't make an estimate because we're going to have to come to the city council for authorization anyway. And so we undertake it as a part of our work program to do the RFP, get the bid, identify the amount, and when we bring the contract for approval, we both bring approving the contract and appropriating the money. And so it's just a methodology difference, but we are going through the normal process to update this five-year plan.
And I also want to add to what city manager mentioned, you know, we, we did, you know, foresee that this plan needed to be updated, so the water operating budget included $100,000 for this, you know, for this item. And so it was already included as the, within the fiscal year, you know, 2021 budget. And so this time around, you know, we're just getting, as the city manager said, you know, it's over his signing authority, so we're coming back to the council to get this contract executed.
Thank you for that, Jimmy.
And one last question, when, when is the, when is the due date again?
It's July and, and of June. So we will come back to council after this plan is completed and we will go through the, you know, the, you know, the public hearing process and notification and then we will have to adopt the plan before July.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands or if there are no other questions? This is a action item and is requesting a resolution or adoption. Any action by council?
The chair, I'll move and we approve the resolution.
Is there a second? Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason? I'm sorry, Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, item B, please.
Item 6B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Golden State Fire Apparatus for the purchase of two Type 1 1500 GPM pumpers, including equipment installation and customization and an amount not to exceed $1,583,776.32. Execute the necessary documents to enter into a lease purchase arrangement for the pumpers with the California Community Statewide Development Authorities and add funds to the 2021-22 fiscal year budget to complete the lease purchase.
Thank you. Fire chief, delay.
Looks like we were...
You were offline, so I was, I was hoping that you just didn't think the picture was going to do it for itself, so, yes, but we hear you now.
Okay, so Javon Grogan, city manager, our fire chief, Ari Delay, will give this presentation. Ordinarily, we do not do this in-depth of a presentation for purchasing equipment, but there, there are two fire engines of a price of nearly $1.6 million and so I've asked the fire chief to give the city council a full overview of why we're endeavoring with this purchase. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to fire, to the fire chief.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Ari Delay, your fire chief. I'm here this evening to make a presentation to the city council on the purchase of two Type 1 fire engines. Our objective this evening is to provide an overview of our fire department's vehicle fleet and for the council to receive a presentation on the apparatus lease purchase request for these two fire engines. Our agenda is to provide an overview of our current fleet, review our current apparatus due for replacement, describe the elements that we use to determine apparatus replacement and that schedule, to review the replacement options that we consider and to review the lease obligation that we currently have and the timing of a proposed new lease obligation. And then review tonight's actions and then take any questions that the council may have. Just to provide a brief overview of the vehicle types that we, we utilize in the fire department, this seems very basic, but it's a, it's kind of an interesting element. We have our fire engines, which are really the workforce of the fire department, does, you know, 80% of the day-to-day work of the fire department. On the right of the screen, you'll see our fire truck, that's our 100-foot aerial ladder truck that we use in the fire department. Our fire engines are really, again, that workforce of the fire department. They are the primary resources used to carry water, pump that water, carry hoes, ladders, the crew and the tools and equipment to be able to suppress fires and run medical emergencies and vehicle accidents. In the city of San Bruno, we have two of those frontline apparatus, which I also noted there that are what we call ALS or advanced life support, meaning at least one paramedic is aboard each one of those apparatus. Those fire trucks are the primary resource that we use to ventilate buildings. They have the large ladder on top that allows access to the roof and a, a large complement of ground ladders that we use to be able to, you know, rescue people and get to the various levels of buildings. They carry blowers to remove smoke from buildings. And the, the ladder trucks are the primary resource that we use to search buildings and fires. They carry specialized equipment to see through smoke to rescue victims and carry tools and equipment to force entry to buildings. And they're again, a primary resource, they carry a lot of the tools we use to rescue trapped occupants of vehicle accidents. And that primary first-stop unit is Truck 51. And again, that is ALS or advanced life support, so it has at least one paramedic onboard that unit as well. And then we have various fleet of SUVs and pickup trucks. Chief 16, myself, we have a battalion vehicle, prevention and two prevention vehicles, which are SUVs. And the city also has in its fleet for the fire department, a, a smaller utility pickup truck that we use to support incidents. The next slide here is basically a brief review of our status of our fleet. It goes over the years of the vehicles and the mileage associated with it, each one of those respective vehicles. And you'll see the two highlighted vehicles are Engine 151 and 152. The one designator in, in front of each one of those vehicles designates that those are reserve engines. And as you note, both of those engines are over 20 years old in the fleet and are due for replacement according to our vehicle replacement plan. So how do we determine the apparatus and its life cycle? We have industry standard, NFPA 1901 is the industry standard that guides how we replace vehicles. And although NFPA 1901 doesn't say exactly how many years a vehicle should be replaced, it, it talks about age and condition and use of those vehicles that are unique to each agency and their specific jurisdiction, their coal volume and things like that. So our recommendation based on all those factors is a 20-year life cycle for these vehicles. The first of the two vehicles for slated for replacement... The first of the two vehicles slated for replacement would be Engine 151. This is a 2001 Type 1 engine, and again, these are the workforces of our fleet. And you can see this vehicle, if it was a passenger vehicle, 112,000 miles would be a decent amount of mileage, but not 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 completely crazy, but for a fire truck, that's quite a few miles on it. These, again, are the day-to-day tools that provide the service that we deliver to the public. And the second vehicle here is Engine 152. It's a 2,000 pumper, and it's about 141,000 miles on this vehicle currently. So I talked a little bit earlier about how vehicle replacement is decided. They are evaluated by their age, mileage, operating hours. And a fire truck is different than a lot of types of vehicles, because typically in a vehicle, you drive it from place to place, and those are the hours that are operated on the vehicle, where a fire truck is often ran at emergency scenes for a long period of time. So we track engine hours as well as overall mileage. And then the overall physical condition of the vehicle, its maintenance history, and also opportunities to improve our fleet and enhance our effectiveness. And again, just highlight that both of these vehicles are over 20 years old. And San Bruno is historically had Engine 51 here at Central Station is one of the top three busiest engines in San Mateo County. The fire department runs typically between 4,500 and 5,000 calls per year, and are some of the busiest engines in San Mateo County. So that really plays into the vehicle replacement cycle and how soon we would place an engine from frontline service to reserve status. I've provided a chart. One important thing to note is you notice a significant decrease right there at 2020, or 2019 to 2020, and that's our COVID status in our community. So we had a significant decrease in call volume with COVID, but you notice the overall trend, and our next slide will show you the trend line for our apparatus. And the trend line is for our apparatus is a linear forecast of our call volume, and you see Engine 51 on the top right corner of the screen is our most productive vehicle and has the most runs. So it's it's a, these things are really workforces, again, for the fire department and provide a lot of important services to our community. If I can go to the next slide? So we looked at and evaluated the circumstances we're in currently and looked at a bunch of different options for vehicle replacement. So we looked at refurbishment. We gave vendors that do refurbishment for fire trucks pictures of our apparatus, talked about the improvements that we would want to make to refurbish the vehicle to kind of, you know, refresh the engine, the drivetrain, electrical components. And the estimate were around $500,000 to $600,000 to refurbish the apparatus. So in the whole scheme of things, if you think about it, you're gonna take a piece of equipment that's about $750,000, $780,000, so you're gonna spend $600,000 on it, and in the end, you still have a 20-year-old fire truck, and the bones of it are still that older vehicle. You've made some improvements, but that's still the facts of the situation. We looked at used vehicles. We evaluated the possibility of purchasing an engine that in the neighborhood of age and years of service that would replace some of these vehicles and still have a usable life left in it. The problem with that circumstance is those vehicles are typically sold as-is and with no warranties. And if you do purchase a warranty, they can be quite expensive. And the cost of a vehicle in that age genre that would allow us to continue to operate would be around the $400,000 mark. And then the third option was a new vehicle. A new vehicle is custom-built for our needs for the city of San Bruno. One of the components that we have ensured was included in the bid process for us was a five-year bumper-to-bumper warranty, which is something that's an important component of long-term success of the fleet. And the estimated cost of the vehicle replacement is around $780,000 per unit. With, let's see here, excuse me, just one moment. To develop the specification, we came up for the recommendation of a new vehicle, we established an apparatus committee. They used a long, approximately six-month process to review the manufacturers, select a make and model of unit that would be sufficient for our work here in the city of San Bruno, and we worked with a vendor to create a complete specification. And I wanted to make sure, I paid special recognition to Battalion Chief Mike Coob, who chaired our committee for apparatus, Captain Tyler Charles, firefighters Travis Reed, Nate Mendoza, and Brian Hewitt. So that apparatus committee walked through the entire process, if I could go to the next slide, to determine that specification and deliver a bid package with the vendor. We have obviously purchasing requirements here within the city. To meet those purchasing requirements, we utilized a tool called HGAC Buy. HGAC Buy is a purchasing cooperative that meets the requirements for competitive bidding. And then working with our finance department, they chose Cal Lease as the program for a lease purchase option. If I can go to the next slide? Okay, so currently, we have two vehicles that are under a lease purchase agreement. That lease purchase agreement obligation ends in October of '21. The value of that lease obligation was $1.873 million. And the idea here is what we're attempting to do is retire that lease obligation that we currently have in October, and this lease obligation, as a fire truck, is about a 12 to 14-month process to get built. This lease obligation would pick up after that sunset and that those vehicles were paid off and we owned them outright. So this new lease obligation would be approximately $1.6 million. And with that, our recommendation based on the evaluation and the factors that we had before us in the apparatus committee was to choose the route to do a new purchase for vehicles under a lease purchase agreement, and our recommendation for the council for his adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Golden State. And with that, that's the end of my presentation, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, chief, for the detailed report. Also, thank you to the selection committee and the team for taking a look at the various options. Questions from colleagues? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilmember Salazar, your hand is up. I apologize.
I think Marty was actually first, so I'll let him go.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Interesting, these pieces of equipment that are so important that nobody knows how important they are until you actually need one, right? Till there's actually a fire and how reliable they need to be. So we have the miles. Now, can you give us any information on like the maintenance? Like, these are getting more expensive to operate? Maybe you can give us a little bit of background on that, just to fill in a little bit, to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Sure. So the maintenance on some of these older vehicles has become more costly. We've done some significant maintenance projects on these apparatus in the last few years, and the idea is you kind of get to this breakover point where the maintenance becomes too problematic, and it's more cost-effective actually to purchase a new. And both of these vehicles are kind of at that age where they're starting to have all those signs of wear and starting to have significant problems. And the problem with a fire truck is, you know, when you do have a catastrophic problem, they're in the $40,000, $50,000 catastrophic problem ranges to replace an engine or a transmission and those things. So we're really attempting to put good money after good and not, you know, good money after bad.
Councilmember Medina, in addition, just to piggyback off that, I think today is a great example, because what we're really talking about is replacing our two reserve engines, that the new engines will become frontline engines. And today is a great example where we have a fire truck that has been deployed to help San Mateo County in the potential mudslides. And so we had to make a decision. Do we send our firefighters out in a critical incident in a 20-year-old vehicle, or do we keep that 20-year-old vehicle here to run calls? And the decision was to send our firefighters that are going out in some of the tough conditions in our best vehicle. And so what's serving San Bruno now is a 20-year-old vehicle, because that's out on deployment. And that same situation happened earlier this year when we had the fires, and we decided to send the newest engine out with our firefighters that were fighting wildfires, and we were left with a 20-year-old vehicle here to serve the community. And so we're having to make these tough calls, and that's one of the reasons why we're bringing this before you, because we really need to get to a situation where we keep our vehicles for 20 years, but 10 years on the frontline, 10 years on the back end, and we have a regular replacement cycle.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you. My concerns were along the same lines, and I do support the methodology here for the rotation and having a set timeline and planning ahead and having the budget in place to replace the engines, which is something we haven't done before, and I think it's definitely necessary. But along the lines of maintenance, I know that a lot of the engine maintenance is done, it used to be, I know, done in-house. We had some expertise in-house to work on the engines, and looking through the description of the new vehicles, I noticed there was a lot of electronics incorporated into them, Linux operating system-based, display systems. And so I'm wondering, you know, what does that do to our total cost of ownership when the vehicles become that much more complicated? Are we then going to incur more expensive annual maintenance or regular maintenance? And then in terms of obsolescence, you know, 20 years might seem, you know, okay for, you know, the mechanical structure of the vehicle, but are those electronics gonna be completely obsolete in five years and then not really worth it? And then can we swap those out? Is there some opportunity to upgrade those along the way as things get better?
Fire chief? You're on mute.
We're missing the answer.
Councilmember Salazar, fantastic question. We are extremely fortunate here in the city of San Bruno with our fire department. We have shift mechanics that work on shift and take care of the lion's share of problems with our fleet. They are an extremely technologically savvy group. They have code readers that read the computers that we have onboard of our apparatus currently, and they're well-versed in it. Pierce Manufacturing, the manufacturer that was selected for this bid process, has a pretty advanced training program that they'll be able to put our folks through. And like you said, as far as the technology goes, these vehicles have some pretty advanced technology. One of the features is the vehicle has what they call prognostics, and it basically preempts you to provide that routine maintenance that's due and ready for the vehicle. So it really gives you a heads-up for it, and you see a lot of the modern vehicles are that way, where you have an app that tells you when to change the oil and when to take some preventative maintenance steps. These vehicles have those same components in them. They also have Wi-Fi, so, and they're also what they call multiplexed, which means the electronic system can be diagnosed in a really quick and efficient manner without really digging through the wires and doing some really advanced stuff. Another really important piece I wanted to share with the council is a lot of these modern fire trucks, and these ones specifically have a system called HOSS alerts. And that system is where the fire truck goes down the road, and once you turn the Code 3 lights on, it is able to notify folks that are using the Waze application on their phones to be able to navigate, and it tells them to pull over because you have a fire truck coming behind you. So some really important components like that. And we have a very qualified group of shift mechanics, led by Battalion Chief Mike Coob is in charge of our fleet, and I'm very confident that they have the skills and ability to be able to do the, you know, day-to-day maintenance and repairs of the vehicles.
And we do send out for our vehicles.
Yeah, we do send our vehicles out for major repairs that are outside of the capabilities here within the city. But those day-to-day costs, and honestly, the total cost of vehicles is actually the out-of-service time. And of us having those in-house people to be able to do those day-to-day repairs, we don't have to send it across the bay, or a lot of times now it's the Sacramento Valley or San Juanquin Valley where vehicles are sent for maintenance and repair. We're able to do that stuff in-house without the travel time and the overtime costs associated with those maintenance and repairs.
That sounds great, thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Hi, so I had the I had the pleasure of meeting with Chief Delay this week as part of my onboarding. So I know, so I'm gonna ask a question I know the answer to, but I think it's important information for the for the rest of the council and for the public to hear. And chief, you had told me when we were talking about how Engine 51, the real workhorse that does the most number of calls, it does, you know, it ends up with way more miles on it than Engine 52, which it doesn't go out on as many calls. And you talked about how to be able to, rather than actually, you know, paint the numbers directly on the trucks, be able to swap those, swap between them to spread the miles out. Is that, can you elaborate on that a little bit for the for the for the public?
Sure, Councilmember Hamilton. So one of the strategies that I'm gonna implement with our fleet, working with Chief Coob, is to be able to provide some balanced mileage. You look at the two vehicles that we're replacing, they're not equally balanced as far as mileage. So we have the opportunity, we're gonna design in placarding on those vehicles where we can take out the placards, switch them out amongst vehicles, and move Engine 52, which has less miles on it, down to 51, and to balance those miles, to be able to get the most money out of the value of our vehicles while we have them to maintain a standardized mileage within our fleet. So that's one of the strategies moving forward for our fleet.
Thank you, chief.
A couple of questions for me is, first, just for folks' knowledge too, is that Central, there's also a mechanic facility there that has been utilized before, and that was trying to use more county-type resources. But also, as was indicated by the chief, we do have some talented folks that are able to do some stuff in-house, which saves time, money, et cetera. So that is a positive to have that again. The other thing is going down, obviously, we know that these aren't cheap, and we know why. But when I was, and I asked the manager, and I'd like to see maybe this talked about at time of budget, is we have a equipment reserve fund, but obviously, we know we can't fund everything. But when we do get deployed to the fires and what have you, and we get reimbursed, there's for the staff time, which comes back to the city, but there's also for the, shall we say, wear and tear of the vehicle on why it's being dispatched. But those reimbursements, once they're provided back to the city, could they be put in a separate account that specifically goes toward costs to replenish the fire vehicles, so that we have these monies, whether it's 100, 200, 300,000 that we may get in a high season, and I'm not sure what it may be, but they can be allocated back toward just trying to keep up so that our equipment reserve is at a good maintain level?
Young mayor, that is possible, and you can ensure that you track those costs, and when we receive the power reimbursement, take the reimbursable amounts for equipment and vehicles and set those aside separately so they're not co-mingled with other general fund reimbursements.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Mason?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say that I met with Chief Delay when I first got elected, and he told me he needs new vehicles. So this is not new. He explained to me how the vehicles work, how a lot of the upkeep on the existing vehicles has been really done by the existing firefighters that are in-house. And so I just have a note here that I think that the need for reliable vehicles for our firefighters that are also oftentimes paramedics really is a priority. And while we're in some tough times, I have absolutely no reservation approving and supporting this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Medina, I mean Vice Mayor, I apologize.
It's all good. I couldn't find it very easily. What was the interest rate on this lease?
Am I on mute? Sure. So the timing for this, basically what we're seeking is approval from the council to execute a contract. The lease purchase would not take place until the vehicle is delivered, which is probably January, February, March of 2022. So it would be executed at that time when those lease arrangements... So, um, it would be executed at that time when those lease arrangements are made by the finance department.
Do we have a projected number?
Um, the current, the current lease purchase, I believe it's approximately one point nine percent, um, for the lease purchase. And I, I believe, uh, CalLease has a similar rates, um.
Yeah. Councilmember, I'm, I'm actually looking through the documents to see.
Thank you.
To see the current lease rate. I'm not following it at this moment. It will certainly be different when we actually go out, uh, to lease and, and be purchasing, uh, the trucks through the lease financing. It's also worth mentioning that this is not a budgetary challenge because we currently have in our operating budget payment of the, the lease payments for the prior vehicles we purchased. And there'll actually be a savings in a, for a number of months between when we retire the payment for the current vehicles and the payment for the new vehicles come onboard. And so budgetarily, in our annual budget next year, there'll, there'll be a savings. But unfortunately, I, I can't quote you the current lease rate or, or what it will be, uh, when we enter into the lease purchase rate.
I, I appreciate that. I just, I'm just curious. And around two is, is pretty good, so, thank you.
Yeah, and then finally, I, I want to, uh, uh, compliment because I think, you know, when we, when we purchased the, uh, engine and the truck prior, uh, by the collaboration, I think it was at this, that point Chief Kennedy, uh, that worked on that. Um, it was, I think as they worked it out, it was close to about an eighty thousand dollar savings by the way it was purchased and by doing them together. And so by, again, I think bringing the team together and, uh, having everybody look into this, I think, uh, obviously it, it was successful then, and it's successful now. And so I want to thank, uh, that same strategy because I think it's the best served for the firefighters and, uh, for the community. So thank you. With that, this is, is, I don't see any council member, I mean, I apologize, any public, uh, members with their hands up? So this is a, um, a resolution requesting, um, so is there any action by council? I got Hamilton, Mason, and roll call.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Hi.
Councilmember Mason?
Hi.
Councilmember Salazar?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Hi.
And Mayor Rico Medina?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item seven. Study session, please.
Item seven A, Report on Regional Housing Needs Allocation, RHNA, for the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand thirty-one housing element update.
And we'll turn it over to City Manager.
Okay, uh, let us share the screen. Mayor, uh, councilmembers, members of the, of the public, uh, now we have a regional housing needs allocation presentation that will be delivered by Pamela Wu, our Community and Economic Development Director. And so, uh, she will give the presentation, but, uh, both her and I are available for comments and, uh, questions. Pamela?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Honorable Mayors and City, uh, Members of the City Council. My name is Pamela Wu, and I am the City's Economic, uh, Community and Economic Development Director. With me tonight, I have Lisa Costa-Sanders from Good City Company, who has been assisting the city in preparing our housing element, as well as Josh Abrams from Twenty-One Elements and Michael Smith, City, City Senior Planner. I'll be providing to the council an update of the regional housing needs allocation, RHA, status, as well as the housing element process. Tonight's agenda will start with a background on the housing elements and why we need to prepare them. What do we do? How does it work? And how does it relate to our current RHA cycle that we're in right now? I'll provide a snapshot of where we are with RHA Five and move on to the next RHA, uh, projection. I will also briefly update the council on the action that was taken by the AVAG Board last week. And I'll explain how the proposed RHA Six allocation ties to the housing element update, identifying the next steps. And I'll, um, close the, uh, tonight's presentation by answering any question that council may have. On the background, since nineteen twenty-nine, as mandated by state law, each city and the county are required to accommodate their fair share of regional housing needs through a housing element update. The California Department of Housing Community Development, HCD, determines the overall housing needs and the fair share for each region. In turn, the Association of Bay Area Governments, AVAG, allocates the Bay Area regional housing needs to each county and the cities within each county. The RHA assignment for each jurisdiction is comprised of the four following income category: Very low, which is fifty percent of AMI; Low, eighty percent of AMI; Moderate income, a hundred twenty percent AMI; and also above moderate income. The AMI represents the, um, of, average median income for the San Mateo County. When jurisdictions receive their final RHA allocation, the implementation is strategized through the housing element process to reconcile these housing production numbers within the housing cycle, within the RHA cycle. It's worth noting that the current housing element is merely a planning document that sets forth policy and strategy for a city to achieve its RHA allocation. However, it's up to the private developer to make the final development, uh, choices. We're currently within the two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-three housing element, the RHA Five cycle, which requires a thousand one hundred fifty-five housing units to be completed by the end of two thousand twenty-two. By the end of two thousand nineteen, City of San Bruno has completed a total of a hundred sixty-eight units. By the next housing element, which is RHA Number Six, this will cover the period of two thousand twenty-three to two thousand thirty-one. And the city is required to have its housing element certified by HCD on or before January of two thousand twenty-three. Um, staff wants to note, uh, highlight a few state legislation updates that were passed in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen in response to the state's, uh, declaration of a housing crisis that significantly strengthened the city's, uh, certification criteria and anticipated a significant increase in the next RHA cycle allocation. As of today, City of San Bruno is behind on making its application, but we remain to be in compliance with our current housing elements. You may want to ask, why is that important? The city wants to be, um, in compliance with housing elements so that we're eligible, we're qualifying state and regional funding opportunities to promote more housing, transportation, or parks initiatives. So where are we in the RHA Five progress? Um, as you can see on the chart, uh, we have produced very little, which is zero, of the very low-income units, about a six, um, a total of sixty-seven of low-income, forty-seven moderate-income units, um, fifty-four of the above moderate income, which comes to a total of a hundred sixty-eight units as of by December of two thousand nineteen. And this is the same chart that staff has brought to council each April as part of the annual progress report that's forwarded to HCD for review. The good news is, we have made some progress in two thousand twenty. If you remember, City Council approved a large residential project at Mills Park Center, which comprised a total of four hundred twenty-seven units in August. Uh, we have included additional, um, single-family constructions. A Skyline approved additional ADUs. We're also anticipating additional residential projects to be approved, um, through its entitlement in two thousand twenty-one. This includes the Grand View Terrace development of twenty-nine units, twenty-two common unit of two seventy-one Alcachino, in addition to many ADUs and single-family residences. The total RHA obligation numbers that City of San Bruno is required to complete includes both building permits that are issued, as well as, uh, buildings that have finished construction or receiving a final occupancy. Moving on to RHA Six allocation, uh, allocation, the planning effort for RHA Six has been underway for some time. But the official numbers were coming out as a draft release starting, uh, last summer. In June two thousand twenty, HCD allocated about four hundred forty-one thousand housing units for the entire Bay Area. This is a significant increase of approximately a hundred thirty-five percent from RHA Five. It is also worth noting that we didn't give the biggest increase. The Southern California received a two hundred twenty-five percent increase. By October two thousand twenty, AVAG allocated about forty-nine thousand housing units to San Mateo County and assigned two thousand one hundred thirty units to City of San Bruno. Between October and December, AVAG decreased the overall housing units for the county to forty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-one, approximately a thousand units less. However, added a thousand and sixty-two units, a fifty percent increase, to City of San Bruno for a grand total of three thousand one hundred ninety-two units. On January twenty-first last Thursday, AVAG approved the draft methodology and the final draft of the RHA Six allocation. With that said, City of San Bruno is required to complete its housing element comprised with the RHA Six allocation of three thousand one hundred ninety-two units, um, and certified by January two thousand twenty-three. This chart gives you a snapshot of how many units is allocated within the RHA Six. Of the three thousand and nine hundred ninety-two, one hundred ninety-two units, um, AVAG anticipated about seven hundred twenty-one units for very low income, four hundred fifteen for low income, five hundred seventy-three for moderate, and a thousand and four hundred eighty-three units for above moderate income. Some of the major factors that affected the changes between October and December is that there were adjustments made in the final draft of the play, uh, of the planned area twenty-fifty, which affected the, the methodology and the final allocation for RHA Six. This also shifted the area where jobs is, uh, is projected and also the transit-rich communities. The AVAG staff also explained that there are policies regarding public lands, aging shopping malls, office park, pipeline project, et cetera. This next chart shows you a comparison of where we are right now in RHA Five, where we will be in RHA Six, the changes, the delta between the two. Um, so I put together the changes in units, a thousand changes in percentage. You can see that in each category were increased, were experienced an increase. And in total, we're experiencing approximately seven, a hundred thirty-six percent of increase in total number and a three hundred forty-four percent of above moderate income units. Where are we today? Is that December eighteenth, final draft allocation was released by AVAG. Um, staff did not receive a notification of the final draft until January thirteenth. A few days after staff was made aware of the new allocation, we immediately contacted AVAG staff to understand the reason for dramatic fifty percent increase. The day after, City Manager and City Mayor filed a reconsideration and objection letter to AVAG asking for the reason of an additional a thousand sixty-two units and see if we can ask for a reconsideration of the numbers. Unfortunately, despite our protest, AVAG were approved the proposed methodology and the final draft that leaves City of San Bruno with a total of three thousand one hundred ninety-two units. What is that tied into the housing element update process? Assuming the numbers becomes our final allocation. Staff has been, uh, collaborating with Twenty-One Elements to update the housing element. We have done site needs assessment, or identifying new future sites that can, um, satisfy the new numbers. And we will also be looking at rezoning additional sites, with, uh, refining the site inventory and to prepare goals and policy for the new housing element. This is a two-year planning effort with a target completion date by the end of December two thousand twenty-two so that HCD can certify our housing element in January two thousand twenty-three. What are the next steps for us? The next step to, um, for the RHA Six process, as you can see, um, the chart on the left shows that we're somewhere in the middle of this chart in January two thousand twenty-one, where AVAG has approved the final draft of the methodology and the RHA allocation. The next step is for AVAG staff to forward their recommendation to HCD to approve of the final allocation. If HCD approves the final allocation, the city will have a chance to make an appeal to the final allocation during summer of this year before the final allocation is finalized by December of this year. What does that mean for us, the next steps for City of San Bruno? We will continue to work on additional project. We will also formally file an appeal to HCD by summer if our final allocation does not get changed. City Council should continue to review and approve pipeline project so that the additional units can count towards RHA Five allocation. And we will also continue to collaborate with Twenty-One Elements to prepare the housing element update, um, along, um, with other cities anticipating the RHA Six allocation to be finalized later this year. This is all with the goal to have the housing element certified by January two thousand twenty-three. That concludes my presentation, and I'm here, um, with the team to answer any of your questions.
Well, and first, um, uh, thank you, uh, to, uh, the director and, and, uh, let us all, uh, congratulate you on your appointment to, uh, the, being the director. And, uh, this wasn't, uh, the welcome gift we were hoping to give you, but, um, uh, we appreciate that you, uh, uh, have been on top of this, so thank you. And what I'd like to do is, uh, first go to our, my colleagues and see if we've got, uh, any questions. And then we certainly, um, we'll see if anyone from the public does as well. Any council comments or questions? Uh, yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
So, uh, first of all, I want to make sure, um, for, for folks that are, that are listening and, and, uh, I would want, um, uh, you, Mr. Mayor and, and City Manager, to make sure, I'm, make, make sure I'm accurate here. When we're, when we're talking about, um, uh, you know, uh, you know, filing appeals for these numbers, that doesn't mean that San Bruno is not committed to doing our part for, for housing. It has to do with the fact that the allocation for the Bay Area was made and the distribution of that allocation among the city, that, among the various cities, didn't seem quite fair. Um, where, you know, some, some of the cities, their allocation actually went down, and ours went up, you know, very, very significantly. Um, because I think I want to ma- make sure that we send the right message to our, to our residents that we are committed to adding housing and, and, um, and doing our part for, to, to solve the housing crisis. That's my, that's my first comment. I want, I just, I just want to pause and make sure that, that I'm not out of line with that, with that comment or putting words in anyone's mouth.
No, I, I thank you for the question. I'm going to give that to the City Manager and/or Director, but please, thank you for the question.
Councilmember Hamilton, uh, thank you for pointing that out. You're absolutely right. And the argument that we made to AVAG in the letter that the mayor and I signed, and in the comments that both myself and, um, uh, panel, uh, Director Pamela Wu made, were at a high level saying, San Bruno is not a NIMBY community. San Boon, San Bruno actually upzoned a significant portion of our community through the transit corridors, recognizing that there is a regional housing need and going through a elaborate and intensive community input process to say, we know we need to build more housing. Where should that housing be built? It's also worth noting that this requirement is a planning requirement. We don't build housing for the most part. We, we provide the available zoning for private partners to come in and build housing. And then nonprofits, when you, when you talk about affordable housing. Uh, we also made the, the point that when the October numbers came out, San Bruno saw a eighty-five percent jump in the prior RHA Five allocation. We did not raise our hand to protest then, again, based on the Director's presentation. The entire Bay Area allocation went up by a hundred and thirty-five percent. We, we understood that to be our fair share of the regionals' housing need. Unfortunately, what happened in the final analysis is AVAG applied what they call to be a equity analysis. And that- And that information was released on December eighteenth without a lot of fanfare. And so there were a number of cities, not just San Bruno, at this meeting last Thursday saying, wait, 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 you are moving too fast. The cities only received these allocations. Only, many of them only received word of how intensive the allocations were within the last two weeks. And AVAC released them, giving only roughly a month's notice, seven days before the end of the year holiday season began. And in that final analysis, what they did is they shifted additional housing to transit-rich communities and communities that had sites that they thought could develop additional housing. In particular, what we were able to find out in just literally right before that meeting is that they had flagged a number of our sites that are within the control of the Airport Land Use Authority that has both height restrictions and sound restrictions as places where housing can be built. We disagree with the methodology. A number of cities disagree with the methodology. And in fact, our number went up fifty percent from the October to the December numbers. And right now, we're sitting at a hundred and seventy-six percent increase from the prior RENA-5 numbers. To say that we're sort of outraged is an understatement. And we do intend to appeal this decision. And lastly, it's important to just come back to the point that we have zones for housing. Yes, as a community, we have not met the RENA-5 numbers. But in fact, what the data shows is even though Mills Park took a year to come back, this council has actually approved every housing project that has come before. And so there are, of course, a regional housing shortage. But unfortunately, what this last equity model did, it actually transitioned units away from some of our neighboring communities that are actually more responsible for the current job housing imbalance than we are, because they've had more development over the last ten to twenty years than we have. But the AVAC model looked at cities that have high transit. And you look at San Bruno, one-on-one, two-eighty, three-eighty, BART, Caltrain, high-capacity bus route, by SFO. And the nature of where we located had us seeing a more significant increase than other cities. And by percentage, I'm probably rattling off too many stacks, but the increase represents twenty percent of our current housing stock. That's the second highest increase that AVAC applied for every city in the Bay Area. The only next highest was, I think it was Hillsburg. And that's only because they're so small. They only had two-hundred-and-fifty additional units. We had the single largest. Now, other cities like San Francisco had more units applied, but percentage-wise, we're the second highest. And we think fundamentally, there's some challenges with the model that AVAC applied. I know I went off in a tangent, but I want to let the council and the community know that we're definitely tracking this and we definitely intend to appeal. And we're not saying we're anti-housing. We're saying the methodology is flawed.
Thank you. And actually, that leads directly into my other question, which is the, you know, what was just approved, they're calling it the final draft, but the actual approval doesn't take place until spring and then we do the, and then the appeal process happens in summer. Is there a chance the numbers will shift again before that? The word "draft" sends a little chill that they'll say, oh, and by the way, here's another thirty percent.
That's an interesting question. So the AVAC board, the AVAC executive board approved these numbers last Thursday. And so unless they change that decision to make the impact more drastic, that's the only way that the model can change. Typically, what happens in these cycles is once a draft is approved, there's then the appeal process, and that is the way that communities articulate why they think that their allocation does not represent a fair share. Now, one of the challenges with an appeal is that AVAC is allocating numbers that came from the state. And so if we are successful in an appeal, that in general means those housing units have to go somewhere else. And so it is an uphill battle, but we intend to forthrightly go about it.
Okay, thank you. So it's unlikely that it's going to get worse, but it's bad enough as it is.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate your responses to my questions. Thank you.
Here, Councilmember. You know, we do have a member, let's go to the public, because somebody has been waiting in case they need to, we have a few people, in case they need to make their comments known and then wish to maybe need to leave the meeting. So we have several. So why, City Clerk, if we can open it up?
Yes, we have Paul Wodkinski.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you whenever you're ready.
All right. I find it amazing that the government continues to follow the NHNA plan that's completely overcome by events and out of date. You know, the government's unable to be flexible. Someone needs to tell these people that the emperor has no clothes. And just a quick question, I know you can't answer it now, but what legal authority does this board have? Has a third order effect of the coronavirus or housing and transportation problems seem to be solved? All these companies and people are moving out of the Bay Area. There was a great quote today on SF Gate by John Carter, the founder and CEO of Kickoff, who said, "What else can God and the world and government come up with to make this place less livable?" You know, why are people leaving here? It's because of the commute, the pollution, crime, COVID. And they don't have to work here anymore. They can work from Lake Tahoe, they can work from Eli, Nevada. It doesn't matter, they can all work from home. As far as housing goes, I did a quick survey. If you look at the aperture in Avalon apartment buildings, they're all looking for renters. If you search for apartments in San Bruno, there's numerous available. Why aren't they full if we have a crisis? You know, San Francisco's had a thirty-five percent decrease in rent rates because people are moving away as fast as they can. You know, and after the COVID crisis is over, I doubt people are going to want to return to living in close proximity to each other. You know, having to bring their own shopping bags and take public transportation. You know, nobody's going to want to commute from here to San Francisco because everybody's leaving. BART Director Liz Ames recently said, you know, I don't see how BARTs survive. The commercial real estate market is pretty bad right now. You know, you can't, it's no longer lucrative with all the requirements. And, you know, you can't force a developer to build, and that's why this plan is going to fail. You know, I'm surprised that the Mills Park project's still going forward, because if I was that guy, I'd take my money and run. I just don't think his financial projections are going to be even close to what he thought they would be. You know, and as a side note, what about the Bay Hill YouTube campus? Are they still planning on continuing their project? You know, with all their employees are working from home or from home. You know, we just talked about reducing our water requirements. Now we want to build three thousand units. You know, how do you square that? You know, what about the green plan everybody talks about and reducing our carbon footprint? And we're going to add three thousand more units. You know, what if we don't have any open space left? What are they going to do with this plan for the cities that don't have space to build? You know, and then the last thing I got is, you know, what's the cost to the city in terms of infrastructure, police and fire equipment? You know, we're going to buy two fire trucks. How many more do we need? How many more fire or police officers and police cars are we going to need? City services required, increase in city services, et cetera. So, you know, is the city going to blindly follow the path of this insanity? Or, you know, do we not just live through 2020? Centralized planning doesn't work, and someone needs to push back and say, this is stupid. Thank you. I'm sorry I went over.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Jules Bruyier, one moment while I bring you over.
Hello? You guys can hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. So although we are in the middle of a recession and there are some empty units, these housing prices continue to be sticky. And while people are trying to pay similar rents, incomes are going way down. So this housing crisis has deepened. I'm an essential worker, a schoolteacher for South City Schools. I have to pay forty-two hundred monthly for a three-and-a-half-bedroom, single-family home. And there was no rent decrease over 2020. Ten years ago, it was at an already ridiculous price of twenty-eight hundred monthly, but we're used to overpaying for rent. This is impossible for me to do myself with my teacher's salary. I have to split my home with other professionals. That leaves me with no space to raise a family, and I chose temporarily to forego the family. People, essential workers who are too young and too average income to buy early, essential workers like myself have to choose between being essential workers here and raising those families. What can we do to make housing prices fairer for essential workers? Our RENA numbers are higher because we didn't build nearly enough units. As noted in the report, only one sixty-eight of the eleven-hundred-plus units were built in the last five years. And the four-hundred-twenty-seven units from the Mills Park will only bring us to half of what's asked for in San Bruno. The thirty-two-hundred units allocated in this new projection are our backlog to make housing affordable again here. Some sections of the city are more limited, though not totally precluded from development by the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. But that doesn't mean that our city can't grow this much or more if effort is given to meet the housing allocation rather than contest it. Given how severe the housing crisis is for all but the richest residents and workers, I welcome this more ambitious housing allocation, and you should too. Let us be a leader in housing by showing our neighbors how intelligent housing growth is done. If we do so, we'll have meant a better part of our quota for this coming allocation. We'll be in a much stronger position to demand our neighboring cities to step up their housing development efforts. If we seek a fair housing allocation, let's rescue San Bruno's affordable housing credibility by actually building affordable and market-raised housing that we promised to but remain behind schedule on. It's ridiculous that we haven't built any low-income housing units. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Alexander Melendez.
Hello, San Bruno City Council and city staff. Alex Melendez, San Bruno resident. I'm speaking on my own behalf, but I do work at a nonprofit affordable housing organization. So that does give me some sort of insight and understanding on the complex nuances of housing policy, regional planning, existing constraints and opportunities, et cetera. It's really hard to follow up after Jules's comments. That was my, I'm really proud of my fellow residents' strong comments. I agree with everything he just said. I'm not really sure we're just build off of that. We're still eighty-seven percent behind on our existing RENA numbers. We don't have to rehash that, but we can look forward into our continuing expansive growth for YouTube and how we're seeking other opportunities to grow. I really think we should drop our existing appeal. I don't think that this existing allocation is crazy to think about. When you, hear me out, when you're thinking three thousand one hundred twenty-nine, it's not a lot when you frame it in the number, when you frame it less as a number and more as an individual people, more living space, faces, names, and families. As Jules pointed out prior, we have a massive deficit to make up for even beyond what our current, you know, RENA cycle allocates for. And there's considerable argument that stating that even in the RENA allocation is not fairly equivalent to our massive deficit of housing needs as far as like how it can affect rent prices. But, you know, what does this all represent? It represents people, as I said, who are planning out for more than a decade, and the housing crisis is now. Look, I know this is daunting, and every city is going to have these similar challenges. Every city is going to have to update their housing elements, rezone for sites, you know, work with their existing specific plans. But with so many communities in this together, there's going to be tools and resources available. It won't be that bad. You know, I would ask that we drop the appeal and we work on getting ahead of our current deployment and work in trying to meet our existing goals. The sooner we can get ahead of it and the more focused that we have on that, the better we can serve our community. Again, these numbers represent faces, names, families, and stories. And also, I hate to do this, I never do this, but COVID axing the housing crisis, that's a myth. Rents may have dropped slightly, but it's still expensive to live here. Single-family homes remain relatively static in their prices. COVID and the housing demand does not apply to in-person jobs. Rents are still high for essential workers, janitors, auto workers, and people who have to show up in person, which by the way, are disproportionately marginalized communities and communities of color. Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well. Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Next is Feng Li.
Hello. Hello.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready. Hi, my name is Feng Li, and I'm an architect and a resident of San Bruno for the past three years. It's really, really hard to be speaking after Jules and Alex because my points align with them as well on the approach we have regarding the RENA numbers. I believe that there's no point in doing the appeal because like you said, it's going to be an uphill battle. If we reduce the numbers for San Bruno, other cities will have to make up for that numbers. So, you know, might as well get ahead of ourselves, get started on allocating the sites, studying, analyzing potential parcels so that we can start working on creating more housings, more affordable housing for all incomes. You know, during my short time here in the Bay Area, we've moved five times in six years because we struggled to find affordable housing. And we ended up here in San Bruno renting a two-bedroom apartment with my brother. And we sharing costs by commuting using the BART and the Caltrain. So like you said, you know, San Bruno, there's a lot of need to have more housing in San Bruno because this is a major region transit hub. So I believe we all should come together and proceed with plans to meet the RENA numbers as soon as possible. And, you know, even with the COVID that drives everyone, that drives a lot of people out of the Bay Area, what about the people that wanted to stay like us? You know, yes, there may be a little bit of a rent reduction. We got like five percent reduction, but we already pay like fifty percent of our income for rent. So yeah, now we paying like, what, forty-five percent of our income for rent? I mean, it's not, it's not a lot. It doesn't make a big difference, you know? We want to stay here and lead a sustainable life. We don't want to be forced out of the Bay Area like everyone else. So, you know, this is an opportunity for all of us to come together and encourage more affordable housings for everyone in San Bruno. That's all I have to say. So thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. You have a good evening as well. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Sheila and Bruce. I'm not sure if we'll get Sheila or Bruce, but we'll find out.
Hi, this is Sheila. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, well, I think, you know, having been someone who moved into California when I was about forty years old, with no children, and I was a professional, and we came to Northern California because my husband is from California. And for him, essentially, it was coming home, you know, from where we were living out of state. I understand the struggles and the concerns, I think, that I've heard with regard to income levels and housing prices. We two moved here at a time when there was a big dot-com bust. We came from a state where it had been boomtown too for years before it went bust. We appreciate very much that we're living on the San Francisco Peninsula, on the coast, in one of the most prized areas across the United States, in a boomtown, in a in a boom town, in a boom area because of dot-com and biotech and everything else. So, obviously, with that comes a high price, and we two struggled. And with two incomes, we were able to slowly move from a rental into a one-bedroom, into a two-bedroom, into a three-bedroom major fixer, and then into another three-bedroom. And that, across 30 years, is how we accomplished it. Where we are today is that the cost of living of everything has gone up tremendously. We slowly, you know, got our foot in the door, worked really long hours and did what we could. But we, again, were not raising a family, so those were choices and trade-offs we had to make. Today, when I look at what I've always considered to be high-density housing in all of these neighborhoods, which were predominantly built in the 40s and 50s, it's already high-density just in those single-family houses. And then when you look at the further high-density that comes with these multi-level buildings and the apartments... We lived in a condo association when we moved here that had something like 400 units. I worry about the infrastructure. I worry about the closeness when you consider the pandemics, which will probably continue to come. I worry about people who want the vaccines and there's no supplies. I worry about the empty storefronts. I worry about the infrastructure and how we're gonna support this. And then the reliance on public transportation, which, again, puts you in high-density situations, which is not good when you're in a pandemic. So, it's a complicated issue. I think we should continue with the appeal. I think we need to continue the appeal. We need to factor in, where's the green space? Where are we gonna go to exercise? Are we gonna have the water to be able to, you know, just drink, you know, and keep ourselves alive? There's serious issues here with these numbers. So, I would encourage the city not to abandon the appeal and to work, as the first speaker said, in trying to get these regulations and standards realigned for practical situations. Thank you.
For your comments. The next speaker, please.
Mike Dunham.
Good evening, council. My name's Mike Dunham. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm actually a Burlingame resident, but I'm calling in because very much what you guys do in San Bruno affects us and vice versa. What Burlingame does or does not do will very much affect your residents. So, I think it's important we all tackle this housing crisis together. Like a number of the speakers, I would urge you not to appeal your revised RENA allocation. Whether you all think it's fair or not, the delays in the approval of the Mills Park project really put San Bruno on the radar of state officials and housing experts looking at cities that seem to be intransigent when it comes to building their fair share of housing. And, you know, that... Other cities with that kind of reputation are places like Huntington Beach that are being sued by the state, Palo Alto, which has been sued by the ACLU for other reasons and is very much a target. I think if you continue to do things like this, like appeal your RENA allocation, it just sends a message to Sacramento that San Bruno is not willing to do its parts, which makes more and more likely that our legislators will, in turn, strip authority from local cities to be able to make their own decisions about developments. This RENA process is very much the state's way of saying, okay, we will give you the target, and you figure out how to hit it. But if all... The message you're sending back to Sacramento always is, no, no, the target's too high, the target's too high, the target's too high. I think you'll see legislators lose their patience for this approach and just say, you know, you know what? We are going to take more drastic action. So, I'd really caution you to be careful about this. The other reason to not appeal is whether your number's 2,000, 3,000, or 6,000, it's merely a down payment on the amount of housing that we need to build here on the peninsula and that San Bruno needs to build within your own borders. We've... This crisis we are facing is decades in the making. All of these cities on the peninsula really should be building tens of thousands more units each. It's just that in this next eight-year period, you're being forced to zone for at least 3,000. I think that, in the long run, the difference between 2,000 or 3,000 really doesn't matter. And I would encourage you all and to direct your staff to spend time coming up with strategies to actually hit these goals rather than sort of these fruitless appeals that are unlikely to work and will just bring, I think, the ire of the state on your back. I suspect that's not actually what you all truly believe. I think you really do want to tackle this crisis. So, I would encourage you to drop the appeal and pivot to how can we, you know, zone for as much housing as we need to, do it in sustainable, equitable ways. I think that'd be a much better use of everyone's time. Thank you for your time tonight.
Your comments. Next speaker, please.
Aros Harmon.
Aros, I'm trying to get you on.
Hi, I'm sorry. This is actually Flimith Ansberg's using RS's account.
Okay, whenever you're ready, Flimith.
Okay, great. So, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Flimith Ansberg's a resident of San Bruno for coming on almost four years now. I wanted to push back on a couple of things that were said regarding this allocation of housing and the idea that this is unfair for San Bruno. I think it's entirely fair. We have, you know, as Jevon outlined, pretty much the best transit-accessible location on the peninsula, and as such, we should have the most housing to match up with that. That, you know, one of the reasons that we moved to San Bruno was because it is such a good location for transit, whether you have a car or fly for work or, you know, are taking public transit. The other thing that I wanted to say was, while it is true that people are moving out of California somewhat more than they have in the past, that is not actually reducing the population of California. The population of California is still growing. It's just growing slower than it did before. So, we still need a lot of new housing to make up for the deficit of housing that has accumulated over the past several decades. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Nathan Chan.
Yes, hello. My name is Nathan Chan. I'm a resident of Millbrae, your neighbor's next-door. And I wanna sort of... My comments are sort of similar to Mike's insofar as like housing is a regional problem and all of our cities need to act in concert together to solve this. And I wanted to draw a parallel with another issue that I care about deeply, which is climate change. One of the most impactful speakers I've listened to on climate change was Paul Hawken, the editor of the book Drawdown. And he had this interesting idea, which is that, you know, one way of thinking about climate change is like, why is this happening to me? Why is all this environmental disaster happening to me? And he sort of flipped it a little bit. He said, why is this climate change happening for me? I think San Bruno should really look at these new RENA numbers as an opportunity. You've heard from previous speakers the cost of... The real human cost of the high housing prices in our area, accelerating homelessness, needing to move all the time, paying half your income on rent. This is a real opportunity for San Bruno as a city, its leaders, and leaders across the Bay Area to do something to help people, to bring them into quality housing, to give them the security of being able to live in a place that they can call home. You know, this is kind of like the Paris Accord moment for us. This is the do-or-die moment. Are we gonna bend the emissions curve or not? Are we gonna make sure that housing homelessness in California starts to go down rather than increases year over year forever and ever? Are we gonna be able to bring back the California dream for people who are at all income levels, not just those who are paid high incomes in a booming industry? Really, seriously, I think you need to not appeal this communal allocation. We need to look at this as an opportunity for us to really make a difference, solve a problem that has seemed intractable in California for so long. This is the opportunity that's before you, and I encourage you to seize it. Step up to the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I see we have one final speaker, and we'll...
Yes, Jordan Grimes.
Yes. Good evening, council members, honorable mayor. Jordan Grimes with Peninsula for Everyone. I was frankly really disappointed to see this item on the agenda. I commented about this at the ABAG hearing itself, but the reality is that San Bruno more than deserves this increase in its RENA share, and then some. Over the last decade, per longitudinal employer household dynamic census data, San Bruno has added more than 4,500 tech jobs, most of which are highly-paid positions at YouTube and other technology and professional services firms. In the same timeframe, per HUD, building permits for just 217 new homes were issued. Despite claims to the contrary, these numbers make San Bruno one of the worst offenders of jobs-to-housing ratios in San Antonio County. I also want to vigorously contest the notion made earlier that cities don't build housing. While this is technically true, cities absolutely set the vast majority of conditions that determine whether or not housing will be built. This isn't just about zoning, but things like parking minimums, permitting timeframes, and the atmosphere of whether or not a city is amenable or friendly to new housing. Certainly, the Mills Park debacle has materially affected the latter point, and the city will need to find a way to recover from that to attract new housing opportunities in the future. Should you choose to dispute these numbers at ABAG, the city should know that unlike past cycles, local advocates will absolutely provide rebuttals and submit our own opposition. All of the above notwithstanding, rather than engage in housing obstructionism, San Bruno should commit to responsibly doing its part to ensure that those who wish to live in your beautiful city are able to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and I'm showing no other hands raised, so I'm gonna bring it back to council and staff. Any questions? And thank you, council, for allowing us to go to the public first. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, so I just wanted to ask, the recent COVID pandemic has, from what I have seen and read and personally am seeing, is that there may be a slowdown in financing of some of these affordable housing projects. And so, I appreciate all the calls that came in tonight. My concern is setting a goal that just is practically not possible. And so, I wanted to ask City Manager Grogan if on your city manager calls or Mayor Medina if on the regional committees that you're on, if this fear has been expressed around the actual financing of these affordable housing projects.
Sure. Councilmember Mason, why don't I take that? Again, Jevon Grogan, city manager. With regard to affordable housing and other housing projects, for that matter, you're absolutely right. There is a shortage of capital right now. And deals that essentially were not inked and funded before COVID-19, a lot of those transactions are actually not occurring. That said, San Bruno has actually been insulated a bit from a depression of interest during COVID-19. In fact, we have seen a sustained interest in San Bruno, both on the commercial and the residential side, largely related to the fact that we have upzoned for more housing along our transit corridor, provided that foundational zoning and regulations... The council and the public will remember that we recently adjusted our parking standards. And because we're at the center of a lot of transit networks, and so, a lot of developers are coming into City Hall. They're talking to the city staff about sites that they're looking at, and they are certainly viewing COVID-19 as something that is impacting their ability to get capital today, but they're looking at the long-term horizon, knowing that both the housing market and commercial occupancies will come back. And what we're seeing locally with the number of our core property, commercial property owners, is that their plans to develop have not been sidetracked because by the time those projects are entitled, built, and constructed, the going plan is... Or thinking is that we will be out of COVID-19 just by the simple nature of how long it takes to title and then 24 months to build, given that we currently have light at the end of the tunnel. And there's sort of more and more that we can talk about as the night goes on. Councilmember Mason, you're muted.
Apologies. I heard a number of public speakers tonight that weren't from San Bruno. I do wish more residents had called in so we have a better idea of, you know, where the community is, because I think they're all over the spectrum right now. But I wanted to bring up that a number of the callers were not from San Bruno, were from cities that were wealthier and had, I would say, a more stable budget. And the reason I bring that up is because we have a planning department whom we're gonna be hiring for, planners. We've recently had three individuals leave the department. Welcome to Pam, who just became the director. But I think that is a very real, practical situation, and it takes time to build up a department. And so, I wanted to hear from the city manager... And I'm sorry, Mayor Medina didn't answer the last question either about the regional boards because I am curious to hear what other city councils are experiencing. But I also wanna just bring up that my other concern is that we haven't... It doesn't appear that we have had sufficient staffing to move the day-to-day house renovations that we have right now during COVID. And so, what is the city planning to do, or what can we do, or how can the council support the city manager to get a strong planning department that is well-staffed to pursue this number if we end up with this very high number?
The city manager, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Let me take that question, and there are really sort of two answers to the staffing question in the Community and Economic Development Department. And one relates to current planning, and the other relates to advanced planning. Advanced planning is updating our codes, regulations, and long-term visiting plans. Current planning is making sure that we have enough planners, but also inspectors, to do the work on the projects and permits that walk in the door. And so, as the council and the public knows, is that we have beefed up our staff now with both coming to the city council for additional personnel, but also during this period added additional consultants, both on the advanced planning and current planning side. And so, because we are talking about an ABAG planning requirement or that's coming down from the state of California, we will also have to adjust our advanced planning staff, likely with contractors, to update our plans to meet the new RENA allocation, whether it stays at the roughly 3,000 or goes back to 2,000. That's advanced planning. On the current planning side, we are supplementing our staff with contractors. The good part about that is that the permit fees cover the full rate plus our overhead. We are absolutely analyzing our staffing to determine, do we need additional staff, full-time planners? And there's sort of the balance there where you wanna staff to what you need on a regular day or on a regular year and flex with contractors. Right now, we're flexing certainly with contractors, but we may need additional staff, and we are currently doing that analysis.
Yeah. And then just to the mayor or even any other council members that have been to regional... On regional boards or committees, or what are you hearing from other cities without... You don't have to name the cities, but what are you hearing about their RENA requirements?
Well, I mean, some of us here serve on HART, which is working together, right? I'm not on that one. Or ABAG, and I'm not on that. But some of those... Some of the regional ones that I'm on, it's about commute or transportation, not specifically that we're talking about RENA numbers, the ones that I serve on. You're just talking about general conversations, and that's different. But we all serve on regional boards.
I can say from CCAG, we had the RENA presentation at one of the prior CCAG meetings, and I didn't hear anybody who was happy about the numbers that they were getting handed. And I have to agree. I mean, you know, it's listening to the speakers. I have to say that everybody is right, whether they're pro or against. Everybody's right, and everybody brings some really valid points to the conversation. But at the end of the day, I don't think it's a simple... It's not as simple as saying, yeah, let's just take it all on. And it was interesting, actually, to hear what from the other council members in other cities... And it was interesting actually to hear what from the other council members in other cities, you know, their reasons for, you know, not agreeing with the numbers. And I think the biggest impact to us is that we had a number that we were saying, okay, it's a hard target, it's a difficult target to meet, but we can probably do it. And then having that whole formula change again, and then having that number increase by fifty percent. And, you know, some of the speakers brought up some really interesting points about us, you know, contributing to the problem. And that is, you know, it's also something that we should consider, but it doesn't necessarily make it easier for us to accommodate additional growth. So it's a tough one, definitely a tough one. I, you know, I agree, we need to add more housing, but even adding more housing isn't going to fix the income disparity that we have in the Bay Area. And it's getting worse and worse, and adding all of those high-tech jobs makes that situation worse and worse. And so, you know, we have currently zoning for a thousand more units, but nobody's building them. So, you know, it's not like we're holding up anything right now. We could, you know, probably zone for more, but then there's other impacts. But I remember the first project that we approved down at the end of San Mateo Avenue. We took some bold steps with that one and made some concessions on parking, and that was a hard one to settle to the public. And we're seeing the impact, we saw the impact when it was near capacity of how not having that parking, you know, made a difference. We weren't able to ever lease out the retail space because there was no parking. And so there's real consequences to doing that. And it's empty now, yeah, I mean, there's nobody in it. So that also speaks to the people that are saying, you know, what are we, why are we building more when nobody's taking these units? And, you know, there's, you know, it seems to be a lot of market-rate units. There's definitely not enough below-market-rate units. But, you know, even when we start zoning more, there's no guarantee that anyone's going to want to build those. So it's been a problem that we've been dealing with for a long time, and it's not from a lack of crying. I know that we've been, we've been trying to address these issues for a long time. So, you know, I appreciate staff's efforts on, you know, trying to make sure that whatever we commit to is attainable, realistic, and keeps all of the real constraints that we have to work with. We're built out, and we're, every change that we make is going to impact somebody. I think Mills Park was very illustrative of how, you know, how something like this can divide a community if, you know, if it's not done right. And we definitely need to think about all of the impacts when, you know, should we choose to go down the path of just accepting a larger number? I don't think it's, I don't think it's that simple.
And then just to add, I mean, I think even looking at the map that went to the executive board that I saw, you know, is it accurate? And I'm not, you know, obviously not everything's a hundred percent, but, you know, if they're saying yes over here at Tamferan, this is where, because you're golden near the transportation, but at the same time, we don't own it, and nobody's coming in to say, let's build it. And I think what we also hear, as we are from our community, is, well, housing's great, but it's not affordable. So you can say, and I've heard that criticism, is like, you can bring in a hundred units, but I can't afford them, or others can't afford to remain here. So really, how does that, how does that help us as a community? But, you know, other communities have been having growth and trying to work diligently on that. Not any, not everybody offline loves the RINA numbers. I just found that ours were more excessive. And yes, there's some commentary saying, hey, you guys need to, you need to catch up and you need to do your part, like the rest of the county. But at the same time, I just want to make sure with whatever that number is, that it was assessed correctly, and the documents are true and accurate to what it represents. Other, oh, and then, I'm sorry, if, for City Manager, real quick, you know, just about the developing of downtown and us trying to do all of that, where are we at with that as far as what looks ahead for the future?
Sure, Mayor, as the council and the community knows, we had the Aperture Project on the southern end of downtown recently completed. And there's another project at 111 San Bruno on the northern end that is under review for their building permit. When that's done, then we'll book in our downtown with two new housing projects. The city has been, will continue to meet with developers and pound the pavement to have more development downtown. One of the challenges, even though we have provided the foundational zoning and actually provided additional value to the properties by increasing the zoning, is that they're small parcels. And so it really takes a developer with a big checkbook and a long vision because they have to do property assemblage. And they have to go to individual owners in order to get enough pieces of the pie to develop a large multi-unit building. And so we do have a number of developers that have expressed interest of wanting to build multi-units downtown, and it's a process. The city has in many ways done its part with the transit corridors plan, but it's not something that's going to happen overnight. And we talked about the economic development manager position to be in a position that we can add that will, on a day-to-day, be primarily focused on hitting the pavement, supporting our businesses, and incentivizing development. And so that is one position that we'll be looking at. But absolutely, we're working at it, but it takes a, it takes a development partner that's willing to maybe buy a parcel and keep working on that other parcel because the property owner is not ready to sell, or it has a lease that's not going to expire for another five years. And so it's a tough process.
Thanks, I'm sorry, everybody, just, I just, it was on my mind. Vice Mayor Medina, say your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Medina. So this council has approved every development project eventually, every single one that's come to us. And we do not build housing. We have put things in place for housing to be built here. Prior councils approved the Transit Corridor Plan that allowed another sixteen-hundred-and-ten units. We're still waiting. We're, I believe San Bruno is in favor of building affordable housing. It's just that it should be more fair of the numbers. And what's unique about San Bruno, then, most of the other cities that these speakers have been talking about, we're in direct path of the airport, we have height limits. We're, on our east side of town is in a flood zone. Where are we going to put all this housing? It took schools to close, Carl Sandberg Field, Carl Sandberg School, Ingall, which has been sold for more housing, Crestmore, which is for more housing, at the college at Skyline, they're building more houses. San Bruno doesn't have the space. So my question, my question for our city manager is that we want to have a reasonable number, an achievable number. And it will take additional effort to find where we're going to put this housing because we'd have to upzone a large portion of the city. And we want something that's achievable, and we are willing to do our part. So what would it take? My question to staff is, what would it take to approach anywhere near these numbers? What would have to happen?
So Councilmember Medina, we have not gone through the detailed several-month process to analyze where zoning could potentially be changed in order to go from the two thousand, which we knew to be in December, to now the, which we knew in October, to now the three thousand that came out in December. So that process has not been done. But I think what I hear council articulating and what staff said, and I'll just repeat it for members of the public, especially the housing advocates, is that the city of San Bruno is not saying we're against housing at any affordability level. We're actually saying we're for housing. What we're saying is that the final methodology that AVAG used provided an additional thousand units to San Bruno, taking units away from nearly fourteen or sixteen other cities in the county. And so we know that there are twenty cities in San Mateo County. And that final analysis, fourteen cities either stayed at their level or lost units, and we gained. And one of the analytical points that was used said that we're a transit-rich community, and housing should be built in order to lower V and T, vehicle miles traveled. Well, one of the problems with that methodology is if we take on more of the region's housing burden, that means people will live here, but they will still have to travel outside of here to get to where their jobs are. Another way to do it is to actually build the housing where the jobs are and not have communities like us take on more of the region's housing burden to actually have a truly lower vehicle miles traveled communities. And so we're, it's not that we're against housing. It's unfortunately just that we believe that the methodology that added an additional thousand units to San Bruno is incorrect.
Sorry, I was on mute. Councilmember Mason?
Thanks. I think my other concern is that I know that there are stigmas around extremely low and very low-income housing, but we don't have it here in San Bruno at all. And that's a concern because I have, I'd have to look at the San Mateo County numbers, but a family of four, I'm going to just guess, is probably going to be between like fifty and a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars is what you have to make to qualify here for extremely low and low-income housing. And so that's really your working-class families now. And so I know affordable housing is already, the financing, the construction, the timeframes are long, but I do just want to encourage us to focus as much as we can on the actual extremely low-to-low-income housing because that is definitely a need, and many members of our community will fall through the cracks. They will move if we cannot house them. And so I don't know, City Manager, if there's anything that's being done now to encourage those units in developments. Maybe we remove the in-Lufi option completely, but we've got to do something to make sure that those units are being built for our families.
Thank you, Councilmember Mason. We are giving preference and working with developers to actually provide the onsite units versus feel-out. One of the challenges with the very low or the low-income units is the amount of subsidy that's required. And a lot of the projects that have came to you recently have been for-sale projects. And so one of the challenges there is the amount of subsidy that's required for a for-sale unit is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And when you look at what it costs to construct a unit in the Bay Area, it's not uncommon for there to be an eight-to-nine-hundred-thousand-dollar subsidy for a single-family for-sale, very-low unit. And currently, our Affordable Housing Trust Fund only has a little bit over three million dollars in it, maybe about three-point-five. And so with that level of subsidy, you begin to see that on the for-sale side, we have challenges. Now, the good news is that as developments are approved and people pay the city's affordable housing in Lufi, which is separate from the requirement for residential units to actually build housing, but as commercial developments come online and they pay our affordable housing in Lufi, are the city's Affordable Housing Fund rules, and then we can invest in either affordable rental or affordable sale. But it takes having development to raise that local capital to then inject into the market.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to echo what I think all the council members have said. I don't think the issue is whether we want housing. You probably sound like a broken record at this point, but I think we just have some very practical restraints, and we want to make sure that whatever allotment we get, we can actually achieve. And clearly, we haven't met our first allotment, and that's with the approval of every single development that has come to this council. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Again, it's a study session, so there is no action required. City Manager, have you gotten what you need out of this? I see a thumbs up, okay. All right, so we're going to move on from that to item eight, comments from council members, first item. Requests for deferment of 2021 increases for all city-run enterprises' accounts due to COVID-19 pandemic and its financial impact on San Bruno families. Councilmember Mason?
Thank you. If it's okay, I'm going to read something, but it's specific to both of the items since they're both about a deferment and foregoing costs. So the deferment of the enterprise funds, I want to just be clear with the public, that water and sewer, the council unanimously already asked staff to look into the financial implications if we were to defer those for 2021. So that really just leaves cable and internet, so the city net enterprises for this year. And then the second item was to request that staff send a letter to Recology requesting that they forego their 2021 increases. So as we are only beginning to reopen, we are not, nor will we be, back to quote-unquote "full normal" for some time. Meanwhile, we have residents that are home out of work, residents who are home working, kids remotely working, seniors cooped up, and everybody getting back to basics. Our food pantries still have lines longer than ever. On July 20th, 2020, Dr. Scott Morrow, our San Mateo County Public Health Director, called for rapid policy system changes at every level of both public and private sectors when describing the fundamental structural failures of the U.S. economy that, as he described, quote-unquote, "are being laid bare by the pandemic." He went on to say that these structural issues seem to be a major cause of the transmission we're now seeing, at least in San Mateo County. Many elements of the U.S. economy can be viewed as illogical, even immoral in my opinion, he says, in that so many people are forced to live lives of economic desperation, live paycheck-to-paycheck, are not paid a living wage, live with no workplace safety nets like healthcare, like paid sick leave, or other wage-protection programs. While these structural issues are illogical in good times, they are downright inexplicable in times of the pandemic. These structural problems are at such a massive scale that they can no longer be ignored. End quote. We, the city council and Recology, have this unique opportunity to provide, albeit minimal relief to some, but optimal relief for those who are struggling during these uncertain economic times. This is our time to put our community over profit. For background, water and sewer rates have increased year after year for over ten years. Recology has increased annually for twenty-four years. CityNet Cable issued high increases last year to make San Bruno more competitive. Understanding that these increases may have and were necessary at the time, it is unclear that the funds in a negative place, that the funds are in a negative place after all these recent increases. It's also unclear that one year of foregoing an increase after twenty-four years of increases in garbage will adversely impact our garbage company. However, these increases will and can greatly impact a household who's truly living on the margins. I asked my fellow council members tonight to support both of these requests. That will take little time and could greatly impact our families. Thank you.
Sorry. Let me, let me just, I want to make sure I wrote it down. On the first bullet point, it had said for all enterprise accounts, but you're saying, no, because like you, I believe you just said, on January 12th, we already gave direction to council to come back with water, sewer, which council said couldn't do it, they wouldn't have the data tonight, probably in February. So I just wanted to clarify, okay, so that's, you're just talking... is, you're just talking, um, CityNet Services?
Correct.
All right, okay. Just wanna, okay. One, make sure I'm following, okay. Then on the, um, okay, so why don't we take that at first? So with Si- CityNet Services, specifically, is there any, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll go around and see if there's questions or comments from, uh, colleagues. Um, let's see. Let's just go down, down the, I'm sorry. Um, um, Councilmember Salazar?
I just, I was wondering, was there a planned rate increase for CityNet Services?
City Manager?
Sure. Uh, members of the City Council, again, Javon Grogan, City Manager. Um, there is currently not a planned rate increase for CityNet in the, the, the next 12 months. Caveat, what the City Council provided, I believe in 2018, was you, uh, provided authority to the City Manager to adjust, uh, rates with CityNet for a few primary reasons. Primary reason being, or, or the first primary reason being, we are operating an enterprise where we compete against the private market. And so you allowed your executives to adjust prices and introduce new products to compete with the private sector, which is what we do with that business. In addition, we are facing what, what every other pay-TV provider is facing, which is increasingly more expensive renewals for the content that we then retransmit and resell. When we get these renewed contracts, we have essentially two, uh, three choices. We can eat the cost and, uh, council will remember about a year and a half ago, potentially two years ago, we were losing about $3 per subscriber per month because we had not increased fees. But that is one option. When we, when our costs go up, we cannot pass on that to our customers and, and we can eat it. The second cau- uh, option is to actu- actually raise fees commensurate so we both keep a profit margin and keep pace with the marketplace and, and our private marker, market competitors do that rut- routinely. The other third option that we have is we can drop that channel or that subset of channels. And we've done that periodically and, and we are constantly looking into the packages we offer. One of the challenges we have as a legacy cable provider, when we're renegotiating our contracts, is that the content providers make you carry their con- not just one channel, but potentially a suite of channels in your most popular tier. And so then, we're paying a fee for everyone that consumes, um, let, our, our, our basic, uh, cable tier. And so it's roughly 6,000 people. And these renewals can hit $30,000 for, for one channel or one channel package. And so in that action you took in, uh, 2018, you allowed us to move with, to move with the market, uh, and, and, and manage the enterprise in more of a fluid way without, for lack of a better term, the red tape of come, of pausing that change and coming, uh, to the City Count, to the, to the City Council every time there, there's a change in the enterprise business model. And so my recommendation to the City Council was, is that you preserve that ability for your executives to manage the enterprise.
Did it, did it answer your question, uh, Councilmember?
It, it, it did, it did, uh, it did answer my question. Uh, I would, I would follow up with, um, uh, understanding all of those constraints and definitely in the interest of not getting in a situation where we start falling behind again. Is there something we could do along the lines of at least freezing costs on the most basic internet package, which is probably, um, more of a lifeline now for, for everybody who's working from home and, uh, studying from home, uh, and, and then allow the, um, the other, um, the other portions of, of what we pay to, uh, to keep pace. So, I mean, we, we won't subsidize HBO, but we will make sure that everybody has at least, uh, a basic internet connection.
Um, so let me submit to the City Council that we've already done it.
Okay.
During COVID, during, at the beginning of COVID-19, along with in alignment with the governors' word that you cannot turn off utility services and increasingly internet is being seen as, as a utility, we committed not to turn off, uh, cable services. That has created a positive in the community, but it has also financially impacted the enterprise. So we have seen, uh, more and more accounts go into non-payment status to the tune of approximately $70,000 a month. And so we have adjusted that because, let's say you had the best package. Whether you pay us or not, we still have to pay HBO, Showtime, KTVU, the per-subscriber rate, whether you pay us or not. So we approximately two months ago sent a letter to everyone that had not paid their bill and said that we were gonna drop you to the lowest cable and internet tier. So we were not gonna turn you off, but we weren't gonna keep paying for your Showtime, HBO, Cinemax if you weren't paying, paying your bill. And we were gonna encourage you to enter into a payment plan. Our normal payment plan is roughly six months. We were willing to work with people and go, uh, for a 12-month payment plan. And since doing that, we have had a number of customers either one, pay, pay the full freight and become current, enter into a payment plan, so their internet tiers didn't drop. And so, uh, we, we are being a compassionate, uh, operator and, and business, but, but we still need to run, run a business and run it successfully. In addition, we have a low-cost internet tier of $10 a month. On top of that, uh, during COVID-19, we instituted working with community partners funded by YouTube and the San Bruno Education Foundation. We put together a free internet program for any kid in school in San Bruno, whether that was public school or private school. If you needed internet and could not afford it, uh, there are resources that have been brought to bear to provide free internet for a year. And, and so that, that has been pushed out. And, and so I would submit to you that, um, we've done, uh, we've done that, um, and, um, and, and we're continuing to operate the enterprise, uh, as efficiently as possible.
Well, thank you, City Manager, for reminding me of all of those, uh, of those facts. Those are things that have come to us before, so I definitely appreciate that effort and it sounds like we're, we're meeting that burden. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
I have the exact same question that Michael did regarding what, what were the plan, if, what was the plan increase, i- if there was a plan increase?
Vice Mayor Medina?
Right. Um, pretty much covered the water and sewer. Um, so here with CityNet, we've really struggled to get CityNet in position to, to, to not continually lose money. And those were tough decisions of having to raise, raise the rates. Um, I just would like to know a little bit more how somebody that is having trouble besides, um, how maybe giving that more information out to the public of how they can qualify for this reduced rate is, is it, we, how does that work exactly for the public? I have an idea how it works, but, but what happens? Somebody calls in, says, hey, um, I'm having trouble making payments. Can I get the, the basic? Um, so, City Manager, how, how does that work?
Uh, so there is a, uh, I'm, I'm trying to think of what we call the form. Uh, but, but there's a form that the city has that provides reduced utility costs, uh, to, uh, uh, low-income residents. And at this moment, I'm, I'm not remembering what we call the form or, or what the percent discount is. But we can certainly, through the Emergency Operations Center, the Communications Section, we push that out, uh, to the, to the community, uh, so, uh, everyone is, is made aware. But I know that all of the, uh, staff that operate the city mainline have access to that information and it provides discounts for all of our utilities.
As a follow-up, so, so I believe that's kinda covered with some type of income, but like, especially at this time that we're aware, like, um, how does somebody prove that, right? So I think we should just be very, uh, lenient in, in allowing people to get onto that plan. Um, just that it's, um, it's really hard, hard, um, and I'm sorry, I'm a little lost at words because there, I think, I think, uh, Councilman Salazar said it. You know, we, we can't, I'm not in favor of, of, uh, subsidizing HBO, you know. So get, getting the basic programs, making sure kids and, and people that, that rely on access to the internet, we, we should be making sure that that's still available to them at, at a lower cost at this time, um, that really need it. So, um, I, I think that's the, the primary issue that we're gonna be talking about now is with CityNet since, um, the next one issue is, is with the Recology part. Council, uh, Member Mason?
Well, um, let me, this is what I do know about the, I think it's 20, I'm gonna go off memory, 25% for water, sewer, um, and garbage. If it's a 32-gallon tote, I think it has to be 32, it can't be 20. And then you would contact finance, you show some income, uh, documents, I think it might even be tax returns, and I'm not 100% sure on all that, or how they do it during the COVID times. And then it is, um, it is reduced, uh, for, for all of those services. And I just forget off the top of my head whether it's, um, uh, cable as well, but I think it is, since it's ours. City Manager?
Yeah. One of my, my approach, uh, to provide counsel and the public with information on this. So one, we can push out the information to subscribe to the city's, um, uh, reduced utility plans. And so we can push that out, uh, in various forms to the community and get that out again. We are coming to the, to the City Council to talk about cable. When we bring a plan for the, uh, fiber-to-the-home project, we can provide an update on, on rates, our cost structure, and, um, where we are with, with non-payment related to COVID-19 and, and what are the lowest-cost internet tiers at that time. With regard to our general utility bills, we are planning to come to the City Council s- uh, s- uh, soon, I, I'm trying to think of the tickler file, I don't know exactly what meeting, uh, but commensurate with the potential increase in stormwater, the council directed staff to return with a, uh, with the option of reducing the 5% annual rate increase that was planned for sewer and water. At that time, we are also planning to talk to the City Council about our, our bill. And we've had a number of residents come in prior meetings to talk about the city's bimonthly utility bill and why our utility costs are so high. And so are we, we are planning a presentation to the City Council and the public on the structure of our bill. And so we can talk about, uh, our low in, our, 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 our low-income reduced rate plans at that time, when we talk about how the bill is structured and why, um, residents receive a bimonthly bill that's broken out, uh, for three various utilities. I know that was a lot, but I think we can come, one, we can push out information to the community. When we talk about CityNet, we can talk about our rate structure then. And then when we come to you on water and sewer rates, we can talk about, uh, uh, how our low-income rates are structured for that, at that time. And so all of that is coming to you within the next two months.
Okay. So, uh, just in concluding, but I'm, I'm also, there's the, the basic levels, the $10, the weird, nobody's being turned off. There is the low-income opportu- uh, option for some. Uh, but yeah, I mean, if, if I have HBO, Showtime and that, and those costs go up, I don't think we should run the risk of the business not being able to, uh, be profitable. And keep in mind, we also got it down because cable, um, renegotiated a lot of contracts. And so that, that team did, did a lot of work in, in that area. But, um, anyway, that's my, my own comments. Councilmember Mason?
What was the, what was the increase last year, City Manager Grogan? Was it 30, 30%? 20? You're muted.
Uh, hey, Melissa, the City Clerk, uh, can you bring in Sandeep Kishner-Murphy, the, the Director of CityNet Services? Uh, it, the increase actually was not a percent, it was a dollar increase on various plans based on how those plans were structured and the cau- our costs connected to those plans. And so it's not fair to say it was an X percent increase. It, it was a, it was a dollar value change for plans. And in addition, we added a charge for the set-top boxes so we can have both a, a, build a replacement fund for the thousands of set-top boxes that we have out in the marketplace.
And even an average Sandeep would be great. What did the average, um, what did the average client's bill go up?
I think we're, we're still bringing it in.
Um, he's, he's in. I'm just having trouble unmuting him.
And council, let, let me just say, 'cause I, I know you know this, but for members of the public, we did not prepare a full presentation and discussion on this item. This came up as a council member comment, and so that's why we don't have all of the information and the questions that you're asking at our finger, at our fingertips.
I'm unable to unmute Sandeep. I don't know if he's able to unmute himself.
Yeah, I know a number of plans went up by $5. I do not know offhand what percent that was on those plans. And then there was a, a $2 or $3 set-top box charge that was implemented.
So I, I think, I mean, I would, I would, I still stick with what I, um, with what I'm, with what I said because the, the majority of people told me that their bills went up pretty substantially. And I understand that CityNet hadn't increased rates in a while. I understand that the ability to increase lies solely with the City Manager, does not lie with the council. Um, but I also understand and heard that we're behind $70,000 a month, which is alarming, um, and clearly is, is an issue. And, um, given the increases that we had last year, given the pandemic wore in this year, and then given the $70,000 a month, um, arrears that's growing, uh, I don't, I don't see how we can, um, you know, make families even think that they might get another increase this year. And I think that's really what this is about. It's about peace of mind to be able to tell our families, uh, here in San Bruno and our seniors, that they don't have to worry about an increase this year. So, um, the City Manager Grogan and I had, had discussed this. I, I am aware that there were, there are no planned increases at this time, but he also shared the caveat with us that it's possible, uh, that there may be an increase later on. And I, I guess I'm just not comfortable with that, given where we are right now.
City Manager, did you just not, uh, discuss bringing everything back with staff report and numbers and facts and figures?
But that doesn't, that's not, we're making a decision tonight, though, on whether to, um, to have staff look into the potential of delaying any incre-
Right. So, uh-
Let, let this, go ahead, City Manager.
Information is correct. There are, are no planned increases at this time. Uh, one of the things I also articulated is that while a number of people in our community have been financially impacted by COVID-19, absolutely. It is also true that a portion of our community, and we do not know how large, has not been financially impacted by COVID-19. And if our cost goal goes up, the ability not to raise the price for those families would mean that the city is potentially unnecessarily subsidizing those families that have not had a financial COVID-19 impact. And so we would be creating policy without a lot of data on actually what portion of our ratepayers were, were impacting. And are we essentially, um, further putting the enterprise in a depressed financial position, uh, for customers that are consuming an entertainment product, um, that have not had a COVID-19 financial impact?
Okay. Any other, uh, comments or questions, council?
Can we take a vote?
Vice, Vice Mayor?
Can we, um, how about we do this? Can, can it be that-
How about we do this, can it be that our city manager brings us forward the increase when it comes to his attention? Because currently, he's empowered to not have to. And, and I voted in favor of that because we needed the flexibility as we're trying to put CityNet Services on good financial footing. That we needed to be, we needed the flexibility to allow him to do that. Well, now we're in COVID times, so perhaps that could just be modified and that any planned increases would be brought forward to us and for us to make that final decision.
Vice Mayor, that's, I do like that, that council means there is nothing, at this point, there is nothing scheduled as we sit here tonight. And I think the city manager also said about bringing forward information about how folks can apply for reduced costs to us as well, and then have more specific data as to where the need may be within that service, the CityNet Services. And I'd like, I'd like to have the data, and I apologize, Councilmember Hamilton. Your hand's up.
Oh, no problem. I was just gonna say, I like that idea that Vice Mayor Medina just came through with about just temporarily suspending the, the you know, unilateral right to raise the, to raise the fee and bring it, bring it to us. But I would also be in favor of putting an end date on that, when we would put that in it. So to make it absolutely clear that this is a temporary thing just because of COVID, that if, you know, six months from now, it's determined that we want to, you know, raise rates, that we just, that we discuss it first before implementing it, before council. But you know, maybe, maybe, you know, have that that be in place, you know, throughout the rest of 2021.
Okay, Councilmember Salazar?
So I, I am gonna disagree with the need to do that for a couple of reasons. First of all, I believe that staff has demonstrated not only the ability to be very judicious with the, with the increases, but also in having a rapid ability to decrease and adjust those rates as necessary. And that proved to be critical during that time when we were juggling around, trying to figure out how to get people who were stuck at home now, free internet and get them set up. And I think that flexibility was important in allowing him to do that. So I don't think I would be in favor of changing that arrangement. Having it come back to us would mean that it would have to be agendized and it would have to wait two weeks. And and I honestly don't feel that, I mean, it's gonna come back to us and we're gonna say, yeah, we agree, don't raise it. But at the end of the day, that, I don't I don't see that that's really necessary for it to come back to us. And I have, I have confidence that staff is gonna be responsive to the citizens' needs and that they're not gonna raise it arbitrarily.
Anything you want to finish up with, City Manager? Other than obviously you can commit that if that was gonna happen, you come to council. But I appreciate everybody's good dialogue. Anything final?
Sure. What I have to say is that because of a council member comment, we've got ourselves into a conversation about essentially a quantum shift in how an enterprise is managed. Um, and one of the things that we did last year is we actually introduced new packages that reduced our cost per pack, package and actually increased our profit per package. And we created a path to seamlessly and quickly roll that out and start converting people from the old package to the new package. What we just announced two months ago was a new router, router package where you could have whole-home Wi-Fi for businesses. The ability that you've given, and I'm not saying this for me, it's that you've given that ability to your executive, whether I sit in this seat or someone else sits in this seat, to appropriately manage a enterprise that competes against the private sector. And one of the challenges that you had with that enterprise before is that it did not have the flexibility to move and adjust like its private market competitors. And it ended up with owing the city fourteen million dollars. And we have turned a corner in how we operate this enterprise. And to get a very short conversation without the benefit of data charts, graphs, information, and staff being prepared to actually forthrightly have this conversation to make a change to potentially prevent cost adjustments in the enterprise is something that I think it's a significant policy decision that unfortunately hasn't been given the time and wait for it to be addressed. Uh, and, and and by council comments, what we envisioned was a conversation about looking into things that staff should possibly spend time to research and work on, not a idea that becomes policy after a fifteen to twenty-minute conversation without your staff having the ability to provide you with professional advice and simply just responding off the cuff to various questions.
I would, I would add to that also, City Manager, that I don't believe legally we can make a decision based on something that's agendized as a comment. Because unless a decision is agendized, we can't take action to make a decision that's a policy change. So best we can do is a direction to staff to bring something back, and that's kind of been the policy in the past. So I don't, I don't think that that's changed. I see that Mark unmuted himself, so he may have a comment.
City Attorney?
Sure. Only to say that this is clearly a broad policy discussion, which the city council may decide is more appropriate for a full conduct of business item with a, with a staff report as opposed to just an oral discussion with no backup material to, you know, written material to provide both the council and the public.
And then if, and if it were to say the executive team didn't have that latitude any longer, that would have to be agendized and bring that back. Because that's not on here to modify, and that was by council action, so.
I think that's correct. I think it's, you know, it's really inadvisable for the city council to be making policy decisions, especially those of this sort of import in this particular section of the agenda without any formal guidance from staff regarding options, alternatives, and so on. There have been a number of things discussed, you know, some of them perhaps good ideas that the council might wish to thoroughly consider, but this particular portion of the agenda really isn't designed for those discussions.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Oh, City Manager?
What I would again proffer to the city council is you have previously directed staff to come back with a financing plan for the fiber to the home, which based on the business plan is the most critical thing that we need to decide if we're doing to truly decide whether we're in the business or out of the business. That is coming before you in the next two months. It is my recommendation that you pause this conversation and have a more holistic discussion about CityNet Services when we bring you financing options for fiber to the home. Because that truly determines whether long-term we're in the business or out of it.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay, I appreciate that and what you say within two months. All right, council direction, staff? To staff, the city manager? We've heard what Councilmember Mason had wish, wishes.
Still stands strong behind my, my initial request. Just under seventy thousand dollars a month, people are not paying. The request is really to put people over profit this year. And, you know, we, we have a community that is truly suffering. We've got people in our community that are suffering. We don't have any planned increases. So why not just give people the peace of mind to not have to worry about increases this year?
Okay, Mr. Hamilton, what would you like to do? I'm just gonna go around the room and it's either staff's directed to potentially do that or come back in the two months if the city manager is asked with data.
So I what isn't being talked about, but I think it was already agreed to by the city manager about about recommunicating the, the the options for folks who are struggling paying their bills and how to, that process. So that's, that's a done deal, we don't need to discuss that anymore, right?
I'd agree.
Okay, so I would, I would, given everything that we've, we've heard here and given, given where we are on the agenda, that would be a policy change, I would be in favor of waiting for it to come back. I don't, I highly, highly doubt that there's gonna be any kind of increases put in in the next two months. So I would wait, I would, I would advise just waiting for it to come back. And we can, we can talk about it holistically together.
Councilmember Salazar?
I'm with Tom.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I don't think any of us are dismissing our concern of our residents that are struggling. And without knowing what the, what, what the potential rate increase would be, and, and we're not even allowed to make that policy decision right now, according to the city attorney. I, I, I think this there's no way for me to say that I, I, I believe in it, but I don't, I can't support it until we have that data that we're gonna get in a couple of months. So, yeah, let's, let's, let's let people know about this affordable rate and how they can scale back. I have the basic plan and cable, it's nineteen dollars, I think, a month or something like that. It's just, you know, we barely even watch TV. But people, letting people know that there are these options that you can scale back. And right now, this is the most important thing. There are no planned rate increases, right? So, so we're, we're, we're way ahead of ourselves here. But I'm in favor of having the data come back and having a full study session so that we can, we can discuss it thoroughly.
Okay, I concur with, it's, like I said, we've already been sold, there is no increases, it's two months. And then to have a well-rounded data that comes back so that we can have a good conversation and staff is prepared. All right, let's, may we please move on to the recology to forego the 2021 garbage rate increase? And you heard from Councilmember Mason requesting that the, request the city manager or city attorney make a written request to recology. Comments from colleagues?
This is a new area for me, as most areas are. But on the face of it, it can hurt to ask. Is what I was, kind of what I'm thinking here, because, you know, obviously there's a contract. And but, you know, let's, I, you know, we send, we, we ask and see what they say. Might be oversimplifying, but.
Well, maybe not, not this hour. The, the one thing that I know is we did, it was brought up last time, and staff, correct me, and on the increase for the fifty-one cents a month, and they said, we'll put it off. But then it would be okay, then whatever the next year is, plus that. And so council decided, hey, let's, let's do that, so we're not compounding it because of the way the contract's written. My only thing is too, I'm going off memory, is that whatever the revenues and expenses are for this year, when we do the detailed report next year, that could have a an outcome, positive or negative, because of the detailed report that they do do. So I think we have to look, we have to think beyond that too. So anyway, my thoughts. Mr. Salazar?
Um, yeah, so I'm taking from your comments, Mr. Mayor, that this is gonna be one of the simple years. And so it's basically a CPI adjustment. I'm wondering how COVID impacted the CPI. I imagine that with a lot of things, a lot of costs being impacted, that CPI may not be as large as it has, as it has been in other years. So I don't know, you know, at this point, we don't really know what that, what that number's gonna look like. But I mean, do we want to get ahead of it? I don't remember either the timing on when that increase would, would come about, but I don't know, it, it it always seems to me like garbage, out of all the things that we increase every year, garbage is always like the smallest one. It's always like the water and sewer rates that end up breaking our backs when those go up. But garbage is always such a small one. I don't know if, how much effort we want to put into that, but if it's, if it's something they're amenable to, maybe we can informally, I don't know that we want to try to make a contractual change, but if it's something we can do informally as a, just a consideration, I'd be in favor of doing that.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, we kind of, we kind of did this last year, where we asked, asked them, they have a contract that allows them to obtain those increases. Sure, we could, we could ask to have city manager do that. I, I my question is, and when, when, when does the rate increase start? That's a few months from now, so we're, we're, we're again, like way ahead of the game.
I think it's March, I think it's March contract. So, yeah, we're trying, I mean, that's, we're trying to get ahead of the game, so we're not reactive.
Yeah, well, it's that the it's the garbage rates generally are pretty, the low increases over a month, you know, a dollar. I think one time it went up four percent. This last two months, fifty-one cents, and, and I, I, I think I'm more in favor of let's, let's find out what that rate increase is gonna be, they have to do their numbers and and at that point, I'll be able to say, you know, sure. Right now, it seems like it's just a little premature to do. And I don't think it's that as big of a significant number to where it will be that impactful.
Council, Councilmember Hamilton has his hand up, and then maybe once he's done, City Manager, do we have an idea of when they present the numbers? I mean, because once again, we don't know what that is.
So.
Sorry, Tom.
Good.
Mayor, members of the council, I did receive an update today that the rate increase for next year has been officially received by the city. It is approximately a one point eight-six percent increase, which amounts to roughly sixty cent per month for the thirty-two gallon toter. So six zero cent per month. That comes to the city council typically, last year it came in May for an effective in July. And so there needs to be some analysis done on that. And last year, I believe this topic came up. Councilmembers are correct that there was a request of recology to delay it. They were willing or postpone it, or forego it. What they were willing to do was to delay it, and so it would compound in the next year. And I can't exactly recall what that increase was, but it was a one point something percent increase. And when we had that conversation, we knew that there would be some CPI inflator this year. And so we didn't want it to sort of compound, right? And so if last year's, if memory serves me, it was like a one point six-two percent increase. But if that compounded with the one point eight-seven percent increase, right, we'd be looking over a three percent increase. And council felt at that time, given that the actual dollar amount, I believe last year it was fifty-one cent per month, and this year we're looking at about sixty cent per month. The decision last year was to not forego, forego it and have it compound. per month, the decision last year was to not forego, forego it and have it compound, which they were willing to do, but, uh, have the modern increase occur, uh, as per the contract and visions every year. And so should the city council desire, we can once again make a request. I just ask for clarity, are we requesting a full foregoing of it or just a delay? Uh, fully foregoing is essentially a request for a contract amendment, which would be a longer, more involved, more, uh, in-depth process, um, but whatever the city council desires, we can request.
So I did use the language forego because I did watch the meeting from last year, um, so that it doesn't compound, right? Because it's already in the contract what the annual increase is supposed to be. So if they forego for a year, then the idea would be that there's no compounding and there's no increase this year. And I've read all nine amendments and they're all about three paragraphs. So I'd, I'd be okay with that.
I see no other hands. Um, let's go around and just see, um, again, it's two, I think you, you heard the council member. What's, what's the, the wish? Uh, yes, uh, vice mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry. A little tired today. So, so I would, let's, since we know the percentage, um, we could, let's see what, what they're willing to do, you know, in, in, in response to our communities, what could, what could they do? And see what, and let them report back and, and the city manager could write that letter and then we'll, we'll know.
Okay.
Or, or, I mean, we could say, hey, yeah, we can, we can forego it and, and then they're, they're gonna come back to us and say, well, yes, no, uh, we'll do this. So, um, sure, you can write the letter. I don't have, I don't have an issue with it. I, I kinda, we're gonna, we're dealing with it, uh, four months ahead of time.
Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Salazar. Tom.
Um, I agree with vice mayor. That was the, that was my, basically what I said when we started the conversation, so let's, let's ask, let's see what they, let's see what they say, especially now that we know what the number is. Um, yeah, let's, I, let's see what they say and then we can make a decision.
I, I have a little concern based on what the city manager said about, uh, you know, whether it's, uh, postpone or eliminate, uh, could trigger, uh, a change to the contract. So, um, I'm, I'm willing to, to make the request, uh, but if it's gonna get to the point where it's gonna require a lot of, uh, staff time to make a contractual change, I don't know that the, the tiny amount of money that we're gonna save the residents is gonna be worth that effort. So, you know, I'm, I'm kinda torn. I, I, I think it's a good idea and I, I really commend, uh, council member Mason for bringing these, uh, things, um, up, uh, just, and even for the things that we've already addressed, I think it's important for us to, to remember what, uh, what's, uh, you know, what's being done and what, you know, always exploring new opportunities to, to, uh, work with our residents. But at, at the same time, uh, I, I don't wanna, um, drown our, our staff with, um, with things that, that might not be as, as impactful. Um, and, you know, we, we, I think we've, we've dealt with the big ones. Uh, this, this is one of the smaller ones. I just wanna make sure that we, we keep all that in perspective, uh, as, as we, as we make the request.
Okay, and then for me, anybody can ask the question, but as far as renegotiating the contract and spending that time, that is something I think needs to really be addressed. So a simple question that can be asked, I don't know how formal you need to make this, but, um, just like what was done last time, and then I'm sure that, uh, both sides will say, well, here's what you can do, what you can't do, or the legalities, or what have you, so. And then, uh, bring it back since obviously it doesn't go into effect until July one. That's where I'm at. So, uh, city manager, did that make sense?
Yes. So, uh, just so the council, uh, uh, is reminded and the public knows, what typically happens is that we receive the request, we go through a process to analyze it and it's a, uh, even in the CPI year, uh, there, there is a big process where we engage with the firm, uh, and we did analyze, uh, the, the request because there is, uh, some nuance behind their operations and, uh, their ability to actually make the request. And so we will still do that process, but we will, uh, ask the question, uh, and what I, what I'm hearing from council is the request is to forego the rate increase for, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two.
I think you're gonna, you need to ask the question of what, what can they, I mean, last year I got the impression it was to, uh, put it off a year, it wasn't to forego. That's, that's my understanding from last year, um, is they didn't say we're just gonna eliminate it, it goes away forever. So, again, we have a contract, so you're probably gonna need the attorney. They have a process, they have to officially notify you of what it is, which you've got a little bit of intel, uh, but I know they, there's a process and then it would come back to council that would have all these options in a detailed staff report, and I think those are the times we make the best decision.
And Mayor Medina, just for context, um, though, I, I just wanna be clear that the written council comment is forego. Because I just imagine having a table, uh, like the contract, there's, you know, two thousand twenty-one, no increase, two thousand twenty-two contract, two thousand twenty-three, I believe is the last year, whatever the contract amount is. And that would really be, that would really reflect the, the change.
Okay, well, you'll have a conversation, city manager. And then bring it back in the staff report with, with all that you have, and if there's any additional stuff that you and the city ma, uh, city attorney will go over to. We'll, we'll get all the, the data.
Will do.
Okay. Um, thank you all. Uh, I'd like to move on to item B. Uh, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, council member Mason, did you have anything else under council comments? I apologize, I almost.
Oh, I just wanted to thank everybody who came out on Saturday. I was invited and I went as a, um, as a participant, and this is the third community event that has been thrown. Um, and the group that's scheduling these is growing. It was a really nice community event, if anybody is still on, which I see we still have attendees, um, definitely come out to the next one. It was really nice. Um, recology was there, they were helping out, uh, Mayor Medina was there, council member Hamilton was there. And I think that we'll probably be able to get the whole council there at some point, but it was really nice and unfortunately, we picked up a lot of garbage, um, but it was a great community event. So thank you for everyone who came out.
Thanks. Okay, let's move on to item, uh, B. Marty Medina, requests for, uh, formation of two ad hoc subcommittees, beautification and communication. And then, of course, once you're done there, anything else you'd like to add too?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you for, uh, making this real easy because one's already done for, for the beautification and, and the name, the name of it isn't as important as the intent to, how do we, how do we clean up our city a little bit more and, and look at the ways of solving this, this problem of all the trash and dumpings that are, that have been going on? And so, uh, thank you for, for that ad hoc subcommittee and I'm happy to serve on it. The second one I was, I was proposing was a, an ad hoc committee to, to look into how to improve the communication from the city to our community, whether it's, it's through social media, through email, um, what, what can we do? And we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. You know, we could look around at what, what other, other cities are doing and, and, uh, cherry pick the best things. And, and I think a subcommittee would be, would, would work well and would initially not require any staff time, um, which is what happened in the residential parking permit program where, um, the mayor and I and Tom and, uh, uh, we pretty much met on our own and, and, and put together a plan and then brought, brought it to staff. So that's, that's my interest here and how could we get our community, um, important information and, and be able to communicate better? So, um, going through the process of, of asking for a, uh, ad hoc subcommittee to, to take that and then when they do meet with staff, if any, any improvements or changes would be brought back to the city council for, um, the ultimate decision. And I'm willing to serve on it, um, as well, so.
Thank you for both. Um, you know, I think what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is have our city manager and Jennifer Dianos just collaborate, maybe tell us if whatever they may have, since there's been some movement in the office. And then, uh, yes, one, uh, my, my thought would be it never hurts, and especially like you said, even with Zoom. I know in the, in the other time when we had the residential parking, we could get together. So that was, uh, very, it was enjoyable. And so I know it's a little modified, but maybe we'll get back there. So, um, I'm, I'm fine with that unless there's any, um, any other thoughts from council that don't want to see that, um, then I'd just say we go forward with that. I'll get some data and then I'll, I'm gonna circle back with the vice mayor if that's okay. Uh, I gotta, Tom, yes, uh, vice, uh, council member Salazar, sorry.
I had a question about the, um, the old beautification task force and, and what happened to it and, uh, the members of that and it had, uh, it had its own, its own activities. Uh, and Operation Clean Sweep was one of the, the big, uh, events that that group would, would put together. And, uh, I know there's only remnants of it left on, on the, uh, website and I was just curious why it was taken down and, um, where the members of that committee communicated to and was there an expectation that they would be brought back in some capacity to work on those, uh, annual, uh, events?
So was the beautification task force, you're correct, and the membership that was doing that communicated that they, uh, were no longer gonna wish to or could participate in that? However, as you know, the beautification, uh, the Clean Sweep, uh, was canceled for obvious reasons, may have to be again for obvious reasons. So I, I think, uh, you know, hearing from the vice mayor too, it's about in, be inclusive and including people and trying to figure a way to get the message and change the behavior and get things, uh, into a better state. So they can be reached out to again, maybe time has passed, maybe some of them, uh, would be very interested in, in helping where they can.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and, and then, uh, we can work on this, they called it the Clean San Bruno Action Committee. So anyway, so it would be more of a, of a collective, uh, vice mayor.
Yeah, was, was the beautification task force an official committee that was approved by the council and appointed?
My, my response to that would be no. It was, I, I won't say it wasn't an official committee, but no, it was not appointed by, um, the San Bruno City Council. Anybody and everybody was welcome to attend and participate.
Okay, all right.
Listed on our website along with the other committees at one time, uh, uh, till sometime last year, it was listed as one of our committees and commissions. And, uh, there's even a reference to it in our municipal code.
Kinda comes back to that governance, uh, thing on our, uh, priority, not priority, strategic initiatives that we, uh, will talk about, I guess, later in the year.
Yeah, and I, and I think they, they kept it as a more fun, uh, group, whether it was doing the, the decorations, right, taking photos so they would spread out in the community and then submit those, or the Clean Sweep, like you said. So, um, um, it, it wasn't a formal brown act minutes and all of that. There was some stuff, but it was, uh, I think they were trying to make it enjoyable. And, and, and needed the, the, the person power to help out. Okay. And I'm sorry, and vice mayor, anything else for you?
Yeah, um, yeah, the, the work that the volunteers did this past weekend was, was really inspiring, um, and, uh, Riley Gibbons, Stephen Seymour, you guys did a really great job and everybody else that was out there, you know, it, it shows what a couple people can start. And I, I look forward to working with them, um, and with everybody and, and finding ways to, to, to keep our city looking great. So my, my quick announcements, rain or shine at Bel Air on Thursday. Um, there'll be a food distribution from two to four, from two to four o'clock. Uh, we're, we're gonna try to figure it out, you know, right now it's howling in, in the wind and, and, uh, I don't know, it's gonna be a pretty crazy event, but, um, that, that's, uh, the, um, the official notice and, and I just wanted to, um, just, um, let everybody know, like, we're gonna be there for you, so, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hamilton, uh, anything for you, sir?
Uh, yeah, I wanna echo, um, actually now, now to, uh, council member comments, the, the, um, regarding the, the cleanup event, I, obviously I was part of it. It was, um, really, it was very, very inspiring and, um, not to rehash what's already been said, which I completely agree with. Um, one, uh, one thing I wanna know that, that made it special and, and for me was that while there were a lot of folks from the Tanfran neighborhood who were out there cleaning, they're cleaning their neighborhood, there were plenty of folks from all over San Bruno. And, and it was obvious from talking to everyone that everyone's gonna go to the next neighborhood. No matter where you live, everybody is, every, everybody in San Bruno seems to be interested in cleaning up everywhere in San Bruno. And that was, um, that was the, uh, a really nice takeaway for me from that. And then, um, and then, um, Marty, I'm glad you brought up the, um, the Bel Air food distribution. Um, I will be there and I'll help you gather animals two by two as necessary because it's gonna be, uh, it might be, it might be fun, but I'll be out there. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, such a desperate time for the, for the community, it's very important.
Councilmember Salazar.
No, I don't have any other comments, just, uh, wish everybody a great night and, uh, remind everybody to stay safe.
Yes, and, uh, I would, I won't re-echo what everybody's already said, so it was a very nice community effort and so, uh, hopefully it started some of us all working together everywhere in the city. Uh, and then the second thing is the city did post out some information, phone numbers, sandbags, those type of things, but folks, it's raining. So, uh, please be extra careful if you have to go out or on the road and be safe, be healthy, stay strong. And with that said, we're going to adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on February ninth, twenty-one at seven o'clock via Zoom.
Stay safe, everybody.
Take care all.